Okay, we're calling to order the November 24th, 2020 of the North Andover Planning Board. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General law, chapter 38, section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020. Order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the North Andover Planning Board will be conducted by remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and our parties with a right and or requirement to attend. Can be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch may do so on their television by turning to Comcast Channel 8. Or Verizon Channel 26, or by going online to www.northandovercam.org. No in-person attendance of members of the public, of members of the board, or of parties will be permitted. But every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the town of North Andover website an audio or video recording. A transcript or other comprehensive record of the proceedings as soon as possible. If anyone would like to participate in public hearings, please email your question or comment prior to or during the meeting to our planning director Jean Enright. Her email address is j e n r i g h t at northandoverma.gov. A question or comment will be read during the proceeding and responded to accordingly. I know for some of our hearings already, we do have comments and those will be read into the record and addressed during the particular hearing. I would just remind everybody on the call who, if you are not actively speaking, please try to mute your microphone to reduce background noise. All right, let's start with bond release, 1812 Turnpike Street CNC Auto. Jean, want to tell us about this?
Sure. On February 16th, 2016, the board approved a site and review special permit for construction of a 5,000 square foot, one and a half story building for an auto repair facility and attached pizza slash shop. In June of 17, the board authorized a partial release of bond funds, 10,000 of the $15,000 bond. The reasoning was that landscaping had recently been planted and the board wanted to ensure survivability over the winter season and that it was sufficient. In March of 2020, the applicant requested the remaining bond funds, however, the board felt the additional screening from Route 114 was necessary and requested approximately. 10 feet of waist-high hedges be planted between the five trees that were planted along Route 114. Photos of the plantings are provided in your packet. The new plantings average approximately four and a half feet high. In height and span approximately 10 feet between the existing trees. And so I just added that comment because the pictures, I would say, indicate the plantings appear very small, but four and a half feet is. Much higher than waist height of the average person, so. The pictures are there, the request has been made, and there's 5,000 remaining that he's requesting release with interest.
Okay, and did you go out there and see that they are, the plantings are waist height?
I've been there several times, they're to my shoulder, if that helps, so.
How? I was gonna make a height joke there, okay?
I didn't think that was as relevant, and the applicant actually asked me if he wants, if I want him to stand next to the trees to show the height in him, and I didn't feel it was necessary, so. I measured them there to my shoulder, my shoulder is, like I said, four and a half feet.
Okay.
Cause I have a really long head and that makes me six feet in total.
Any members of the board have comments?
Just, just an observation, I'm thankful that the applicant has done this extra work, I'm still not really wild about it, I. Think in hindsight, we probably could have done better, but he has made an effort, it was just what we told him to do and. You know, at this point, I don't think we need to press him any further, but I'd certainly ask him to do more in the future, but you know, he's under no obligation to do so.
Thank you, John. Anyone else? All right, so I, and I agree with John, I think, you know, just to keep up with the plantings, the better looks, I think, the better for the business and the. Better looks for the rest, you know, really coming into town, so, can we get a motion to approve the. Request for the release of remaining bond funds at 1812 Turnpike Street? Okay, motion made by Kate.
Second.
Seconded by Peter, we'll do a roll call vote, John?
Yes.
John votes yes, Aaron? Aaron votes yes, I vote yes, Peter?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Okay, motion for release of remaining bond funds is approved. All right, next, we're gonna, we're just gonna go down the agenda in order, Jean, unless you see a reason otherwise.
Only if you want to consider, Three Grape Pond Road has asked for continuance till the December 15th meeting, so if you want to move that one along, if the board is supportive, otherwise, I have no objection.
Okay, so it's, but without opening it, right?
No, open the hearing and continue with no evidence heard.
You, okay, you want to open it, okay.
Yes, because it was noticed to open tonight, and I've included in the board packet all the materials submitted to date, but I would suggest that I would just carry all that forward to the December 15th meeting. If you entertain the request to continue.
Okay, so we'll, we'll do that, and then we'll just go to the continued public here and the other new public here. So my announcement about public hearings, I gotta do this for each one, right? Okay, so we're gonna do Three Grape Pond Road, Elaine Finnberry. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 38. Section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This public hearing of North Andover Planning Board will be conducted by remote participation. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation may be found at the town's website, www.northandoverma.gov. Members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so on the television by turning to Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 26. Or online at www.northandovercam.org. No in-person members of attendance of members of the public, members of the board, or. The applicant will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. If the public would like to participate in, in the hearing, please email your question, comment prior to or during the meeting to. Our planning director Jean Enright at j e n r i g h t at northandoverma.gov. A question or comment will be read during the proceeding and responding, responded to accordingly. Alright, so that is now open, and can we get a motion to continue the public hearing on the applicant's request to December 15th, 2020?
It's a motion to continue.
Motion made by John, Aaron, was that a second?
Sure.
Okay, all in favor, John?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
I vote yes, Peter?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Okay, Three Pub, Three Grape Pond Road is now continued to December 15th. Continued public hearings, 127 Turnpike Street Eaglewood Shop, Linear Retail, North Andover Number One LLC. Application for Site Plan Review Special Permit Modification under Article 8, Part 3, including parking special permit under Article 8, Part 1. And Article 10, 195, 10.7, the applicant proposes to provide for the modification of parking and related improvements. No changes to the existing buildings or lot are proposed, the property is located in the general business zoning district. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General law, chapter 38, section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order. Opposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This public hearing of the North Andover Planning Board will be conducted by remote participation. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation may be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. Members of the public may watch the meeting by doing so on their televisions by tuning into Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 26. Or online at www.northandovercam.org. No in-person attendance will be permitted. In the event that we're able to. Broadcast the proceedings in real time by technological means, we will post on the town of North Andover website an audio or video recording. A transcript or other comprehensive record of the proceedings. If members of the public would like to participate, please email your question or comment. Prior to or during the meeting to j e n r i g h t at northandoverma.gov. The question, comment will be read during the proceeding and responded to accordingly. I believe Kate has recused herself from this hearing. Okay, Jean, why don't you tell us where we're at, and then let us know if there is any public comment that has come in prior to the meeting, and then we'll hear from the applicants.
Okay, so, this request is for a modification to a previously approved site plan review special permit and a request for parking special permit. The hearing opened the last board meeting, and at the board's request, a decision has been for the year consideration. This application proposes no changes to the existing buildings or to the property. It was also at the last hearing that a butter comment related to a desire for a sidewalk to be installed from the intersection at the. Route 114, 133 intersection at the Burger King location, extended down Route 133 to the YMCA. So included in your packet information, I had indicated I'll follow up with Mass DOT in terms of their improvement project. And there will be an extension of the sidewalk along Route 133. From the intersection of 114, 113, extending. On both sides of the roadway to just past the location where Merrimack College has roadway access, so. If you're not familiar with that, there's a roadway that runs kind of from the college entrance location across to Route 133, just past the last property in North Andover. And so there will be an extension, however, it is shy of making it all the way to the YMCA. And in correspondence related to that is included in your media packet.
Okay, any additional butter comments?
There's no butter comments.
Okay.
There is some in the packet.
Right, I just, yeah, I was see if there's anything new, so nothing new, okay. Anything additionally from the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, now the members of the board, John Smolak, Smolak and Vaughn for Linear Retail, North Andover Number One, the applicant. Just with me are Greg Dros, Vice President Asset Management for Linear Retail, as well as Jeffrey Dirk, managing partner with Van Assen Associates. Here to respond to any questions, but I don't think we have any further information to provide. Since our last meeting, I think we were waiting for a draft decision to be considered by the board.
Okay, and have you reviewed the draft decision, is there anything in there that you want us to particularly look at?
I have had a chance to review it, nothing major, I think, is if the board is going through the decision, otherwise, I'll, I'll just mention a couple of things. But nothing, nothing significant.
Okay. Any members of the board have comments or questions?
So, I have received an email from John Smolak detailing those suggestive edits, so I will cover that at the time that you're reviewing the decision.
Well, okay, I, but I do want to do that before we close the public here.
Okay.
So that's fine, does anyone have any questions or comments before we go through the draft decision?
Yeah, in time, just a follow-up for Jean. Jean, is there anything going into any rationale for why the sidewalk doesn't continue further?
I think it's just the scope of the nasty OT project is for Route 114, and so. They did is within their scope.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, Kelly, are you on the line? Cause you'll, we'll have you vote on this one.
I am.
Okay, great, okay, so let's go through the decision, Jean, point out anything that you'd like us to particularly look at.
Okay, so what came in late today is number nine. In support of the B will be added before 2020. And number 10, the sentence will start with at the July 21st, 2020 meeting.
Okay.
And number 12, the second line references section 8.14, that will be replaced with section 195-8.4. And in the fourth line down, where it says 8.1.8G, John is proposing to replace that with 195-8.8 and 195-8.8D7. And so I would just, if you think of it and you, upon your approval, if. You allow for me to just verify what that section is and what he's referencing to confirm it's appropriate. Sorry, John, I just don't have that memorized, so.
Okay, so why don't we? While we finish looking through it, see if there's any other comments people have before we close the public here.
I just wanted to mention that the last sections that we identified, 8.8, it's just the general special permit section for parking. And, and the 8.8D7 is just the specific section for reduction in parking, under the parking provisions. That's it.
Hey Ted, do we have to make a motion to close? I don't think we did yet.
Yeah, not yet, I wanted to just make sure there were no other substantive comments, but not yet, thank you, John.
I forget these things pretty easily these days, actually.
Yeah, I, speaking of Jean, I know we had talked in a previous meeting about making. The process for changes in this plaza more streamlined, do we address that in this? Or is that separate?
No, we addressed that.
We did that before, this is just the parking.
This is the parking, but it also modifies language that would allow if a new tenant is coming in for the review to be by the building commissioner. And myself to determine if it satisfies the zoning bylaw parking requirements.
Okay, where is that? I just wanted to review that.
Okay.
Condition 20, I believe.
Condition 20.
Okay.
So 6.7 was the original condition, and that's being modified or proposed today. So the original decision conditioned, the change would go to the planning board, where. Any other change in and out of a tenant typically goes the building commissioner and myself.
When it says that collectively exceeds, I, I read that as meaning the entire 21,000 square feet in the entire plaza?
No, the restaurant use.
Of the restaurant, which is open and, okay.
So originally, the restaurant use for this plaza had been conditioned at approximately 9,000 square feet.
For any one restaurant.
Yeah, well, it was. It was conditioned for 9,000 square feet, which is more than Burton, so there were other restaurants contemplated, but. Over the years, there's been some insubstantial changes that have allowed for more use, and given the Five Guys. It will be opening soon, you had conditioned it up to, again, I forget the exact, I think, 18,000, and so they're proposing to go as high as 21.
Right, but I, I mean, I guess, I'm just saying, is that 21,000 square feet of restaurant use in the entire plaza?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, you might want to word stuff it a little bit because it's a restaurant that collectively exceeds. That maybe what you'd say is the total amount of restaurants in the plaza exceed, and just a little bit cleaner that way.
Okay.
So something along the lines of wishes to open a restaurant, comma, and, and such. Use increases the. Square footage to over 21,000 square feet. And I guess it's not necessarily open either, and it should be wishes to open or expand, right? So if, if one of the restaurants expands, you're not necessarily opening a new business, but expanding a current business. So I'm fine with the 21,000 square feet, I just.
Yeah.
Effectively say the cumulative, if the cumulative restaurant use in the plaza exceeds 21,000, they have to come in.
Right, so that's, yeah, that's, that's, I like that, yeah. Okay, okay, so can we get a motion to close the public hearing?
So what?
Seconded.
Motion made by John, seconded by Kelly, all in favor, John?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
I vote yes, Peter, yes, voting to close the public hearing.
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Okay, hearing is now closed, when John rejoins us, we'll vote to approve as amended.
John's back on.
Okay, can we get a motion to approve as amended, include, yeah, approve as amended?
Okay, Jean, I have a question, actually, is, and it may be that the thing we just talked about doesn't, but. I think everything that we're gonna do is not gonna have any problem at all, I think it all makes sense in the overall scheme of things. But do we have any hook to check, you know, like lately, we've been in the site by reviews, we say, come back in a year and tell us how you're doing. Um, I feel that's a better control than forcing micromanaging people, just say, come back, tell us. If, if it's working out, okay, it doesn't have to be a lot, do you have something like that in this, or was the intent of that clause you just added to deal with that?
Yeah, we don't have, we don't have the follow-up condition, but the, the one that we just talked about was specific to restaurant use, so. It's not the, not how it's working in general amongst all the mixture of uses.
The restaurant use generally requires more parking, right? It's a little bit denser.
It's an intensive use, yeah.
Yeah, um, I mean, I'm okay with, without having it here, but in general, I like to do it, I, I take here, there's a big enough margin that. You know, even if the entire plaza is all restaurants, I think we probably have enough room, so. But, you know, again, if you have any concern, Jean, that maybe something could go awry, we, it would be good to have it back in a year.
Yeah, I don't at this time, honestly, John, I think it's somewhat self-policing as well. And given the mix of tenants now, I, I don't, I just don't think there's ever been a problem, and I don't think this expansion to 21,000 square feet, a restaurant is gonna trigger that in and of itself.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Great, thank you, John, can we get a motion to approve as amended?
So moved.
Motion made by John?
Second.
Seconded by Peter, all in favor, John?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Peter?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Okay, approved, thank you, as amended, Jean, maybe just check in with me after you review that. Bylaw clause to make sure it's the right one, and just the language on the 21,000 square feet.
Yep.
Okay, great.
Great Thanksgiving.
Thank you, John. 174 Co-Tuit, how do I pronounce that street?
Co-Tuit.
Co-Tuit, okay, 174 Co-Tuit Street, 5C Construction LLC. Application has been made for planning board approval of a proposed two-lot definitive subdivision plan at 174 Co-Tuit Street. And construction of a roadway within an undeveloped paper street, Falmouth Street, along with associated infrastructure, including drainage facilities, landscaping and utilities. Premises are located within the R4 zoning district. Public hearing. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, which is general law, chapter 38, section 18. And the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This public hearing of the North Andover Planning Board will be conducted by remote participation. Specific information, the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and or parties with a right and or requirement to attend can be found on the town's website. At www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch may do so on their television by turning into Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 26. Or online at www.northandovercam.org, a reminder that even if you're watching, it's actually just gonna be audio. No in-person attendance of members of the public or members of the board, or the applicants will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on town and North Andover website an audio or video recording, transcript or other comprehensive record as soon as possible. If the public would like to participate in the public hearing, please email your questions, comment prior to or during the meeting to. Our planning director Jean Enright at j e n r i g h t at northandoverma.gov. The question comment will be read during the proceeding and responded to accordingly. Okay, so the way this is gonna work, Jean, I'll have you introduce it, we'll hear from the applicant, we'll. Go through any butter comment, and then we'll do questions and comments from the board, in that order, I'd like to do it, okay? Jean, I think you're muted.
Sorry about that. The applicant proposes to divide an existing lot into two lots, the new lot would front a paper street, Falmouth Street. Therefore, access to the lot will need to be constructed. The board recently reviewed a similar subdivision application located at 485 Wood Lane. As shown in the aerial view included in your packet, directly across Falmouth Street is a lot that also has potential for a similar subdivision. The proposal before you is for the construction of a 12-foot roadway, which will remain private and provide access to only this proposed newly created lot. I did not send this application for storm water review as the town engineer has informed and reviewed the proposed storm water management. This approach was also taken with 485 Wood Lane application. The application includes a list of waiver requests in regard to the second requested waiver proposing a T-turnaround in the lieu of a cul-de-sac. The North Andover Fire Department has commented that while a cul-de-sac would be preferable, the fire department would accept the T-turn. The plans don't currently show that T-turn, but the applicants had indicated that they're fine with that condition if the board. Would like to condition a T-turn added. The department review comment has also been received from Health Conservation Police Department, DPW Operation. The department review comment has also been received from Health, Conservation, Police Department, DPW Operations and DPW Engineering and Building. I've not um, received responses to those comments yet, but pretty much they're. They're not high hurdles by any means, so I would anticipate after this meeting, anything that comes up, there'll be a round of responses.
Let's hear from the applicant.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Jim Handley, Civil Design Consultants, I'm here tonight with. Mira Cousins, uh, who's the project engineer for the application, as well as Joe Ficelli, who is, uh, uh, the applicant with five C Construction. Um, so I think Jean kind of provided you with a good once-over as to what we're doing, but I will try to walk you through in a little bit more detail. And if you have any questions, I will try to answer for you. So. This first sketch that we're looking at here kind of shows you where the property sits. You can see it relative to one fourteen Turnpike Street.
When you say first sketch, so members of the public who are who are watching can't actually see, so just just identify. Let's identify the document.
Could, could I share my screen?
You can share your screen. We just need, we need, just need someone to say what the document is that we're looking at. So that's fine. Okay, so which document this is?
This is sheet one, it's the locust map in the top right-hand corner of sheet C one.
Okay, so this is twenty ten twenty definitive subdivision plan set, is that correct? Is that the name of the PDF?
Twenty, uh, twenty twenty-two twenty, right?
Is this something that's, that's the PDF that we have?
Yes, yes.
So, so, James, you're showing the plan set. So the plan set in the file. That the public has access to is titled twenty ten twenty underscore definitive subdivision plan set dot PDF.
Okay, thank you, Jean. And we're looking at the first page. Okay, great.
Yep, we're just looking at the first page and I'm just trying to get everybody kind of oriented to it here. Um, this is again, the locust map on sheet C one, first page of that PDF. Um, you can see Turnpike Street, Route one fourteen, the intersection with Waverly Road. And Co-It Street comes off of, uh, that, uh, five-way intersection. Um, so I kind of wanna, uh, what I'd like to do tonight is just kind of like maybe give you a five-minute presentation here. Talk about the site, uh, what we're proposing, the the roadway in detail, and walking through the waivers. Uh, but one thing I'd like to kind of, uh, make you aware of is that, uh, the applicant, uh. Uh, Joe Ficelli asked us to really try to coordinate with the town. He was familiar with the project that was recently done in town. That had kind of gone through, and this was very similar. So we actually reached out to Jean, into, uh, John, the town engineer. In September, we had an initial conversation, kind of developed a game plan. We went back, we did our homework. In October, we sat down with him, well, we actually had a Zoom, uh, before we actually formally submitted on, on ten twenty-two. So tried to get as much information as we could, um, upfront about. How you guys were able to, uh, to manage the previous one, what you wanted to see, and we tried to implement that, uh, uh, in in this initial plan set. So this is a, uh, this is, this is now sheet C two. And I'm looking at the definitive subdivision plan. What this plan shows really is kind of the, the the plan of of land. In in the subdivision that we're proposing on this lot. Um, Jean mentioned that we're in the, uh, the R four zoning district. There is an existing single-family residence, which is two remaining. The, uh, the, the entire lot is approximately, uh, twenty seven thousand five hundred square feet. And we have approximately one hundred and eighty feet of existing frontage on Co-It Street. Um, you can see on the right-hand side of the shared screen is Falmouth Street. Which is a, uh, I I guess a private forty-foot wide paper street. Um, slopes on the site are are fairly gentle and and one essentially from. Uh, from the south to the north toward Co-It Street. So from really the bottom of the page, really the bottom right-hand toward the, uh, the, uh, label for. The Two-It Street. So what's our proposal? Our proposal is simply to come in with a subdivision. That meet your zoning requirements. So, so your zoning requirements, I believe in this district require, uh, twelve thousand five hundred square feet for each lot. So what we're proposing to do is keep the existing house on an exist, on on a new lot, uh, that has approximately fifteen thousand two hundred and nineteen. Square feet and then satisfies frontage, uh, for the zoning. Uh, Lot Two, uh, is our proposed lot, and we'll gain access off of, uh, improvements to to the founded paper street. Uh, this lot two on the bottom side of the shared screen is twelve thousand five hundred square feet. And frontage will be provided off of the new, uh, off of the new work. So, uh, big picture here is that the, the existing lot and the house on the existing lot allow us to subdivide. Meet the frontage requirements, the area requirements in in the building set. Clicking down one sheet here, just kind of give you a better idea as to the physical improvements proposed, uh, for the road. So the feedback we got, uh, when we initially started this was, um, although it is in a private roadway. And it is, uh, it will be a private road when when we're done with construction and we're fortunate enough to get your endorsement. Um, this really is, uh, uh, the magnitude of of, uh, what I consider a driveway. Um, so what we're proposing is twelve feet of pavement, um, tying in to Co-It Street. We actually offset it, uh, toward our property line to to, uh, really twofold, to stay away from an existing utility pole. That's in Co-It Street, so we don't have to move that, but also to provide as much of a buffer to the existing, uh, lot. Uh, one fifty-four to Co-It Street, which is opposite our, uh, lot at one seventy-four. So it's on the right-hand side of this here. So this is a forty-foot wide way we've offset this, um, probably an additional ten feet, give or take, uh, to provide.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Uh, can you just describe the ownership of Falmouth Street?
Uh, right, so it would be a paper street, and typically what happens with an unimproved paper street is that half of the, uh, it. Is that the, the rights to travel on the paper street would be shared up to the channel line. Uh, with the butters on either side. That's generally what what happens with that. And once we make improvements to that. Um, we we would then have the right that access to it, as would one fifty-four. Um, the applicant, five C Construction, has made, uh, ha- ha- has reached out to one fifty-four to see if they were in interest. In providing access to one fifty-four, because we don't want to get into a situation where we come to you, we have one lot off of it, and then all of a sudden it gets blown up. Because somebody else wants access to it. So the the information we were provided was at this time, there's no interest. In any kind of additional development on one fifty-four to it. So we stayed with the guidance that we got, which was the twelve-foot wide kind of offset. Um, driveway slash private roadway.
Okay, and and are you proposing, I mean, so now, based on your proposal, we'll have. One part of this paper street, which is paved. The portion presumably where, um, one twenty-seven has, I'm sorry, one seventy-four. One seventy-four has ownership. And then part of that not paved, and then the entirety of. One fifty-four's ownership rights, presumably, I mean, I assume you guys are checking the ownership right there. Um, is unpaved. So is there going to be something? Kind of in between those two, set that apart? Yeah, I guess that's my question.
Are you saying anything physically?
Yeah, I mean, sometimes we see like little islands or flower, it it's just. It, it just, it's gonna be a pretty distinct, and I guess if one's a driveway. Uh, but if if one fifty-four ever wanted to build out, you'd want to be able to have something. Kind of in between, so everybody knows where you're building to, and things like that.
Yeah, it, Aten, I, I understand exactly where you're going with this. I. I come up with a slightly different answer. I I mean, as I was looking at this. If if it were this lot alone, I'd have no problem making this thing a twelve-foot wide, um. Roadway, because we've done it in the past. We've made construction of roadways in a number of cases where it just didn't make sense to do it, and if. If all we were doing is providing access to a single lot, we could live without it, but this is a. Paper street, you know, it was laid out for a reason, and there's the butters on the other side of it, they use it. I. I, I kind of think that we might want to consider making it a little wider. I I I don't like to say that. I really don't, because I, my preference is not to pay more, but for the very reason you said is. I don't think there should be two separate driveways next to each other, because this is a paper street, and if the other party ever uses it, it it should be. Built with sufficient width grade and construction to accommodate somebody on the other side.
And so, John, what happens in that situation? And so say, say it got built to half the road. And fifteen years from now, ten years from now, the neighbors decide they want to do it. Do the, and they have to come before the board. Do we tell them they have to match the driveway? Is that generally what you would think?
I mean, it generally, it, you know, with paper streets, it it typically doesn't come up for a lot of reasons. There's. You know, maybe not something on the other side, but the, you know, the the basic notion, I think, from a public policy point of view, what you want to do is you want to build a road once. And not have to do it again. So.
Right.
You know, the, one of the options we would have here is to construct a sixteen-foot wide thing up to a slightly higher standard. And even bring it a little bit closer to the center, and then that way, if the person on the other side eventually decided they wanted to use it, it would be there. Now, yeah, they're a free rider, but we're building in a public way, so I mean, a, you know, a a a paper street. So I think that from a public policy point of view, that's the better thing to do.
Okay.
Not what I like from an environmental point of view, but I think from a land development point of view, it's a more logical way to do it.
So, Aton, can I interject?
Please.
So I did have a conversation with the daughter of the homeowner across Falmouth Street, and. She did raise concerns about tree removals, so she wanted to keep trees, and I think that speaks to your environmental concern, John. So I'm, I'm just letting you know, she did not provide any comments in writing, um, but did say it's a wooded area, and she.
I mean, y- y- you know, again, that's fine, and and you know, maybe, again, I'm just thinking out loud, is maybe you don't make the thing sixteen feet wide. But you, you know, you, that basically if the people on the other side eventually want to, uh, to build, they have. Do it in the existing right of way, and you don't put a barrier in in the middle, you just make, at that point in time, you just make the driveway wider.
Right, so that, I would agree with that. So if they were to come forward, depending on the circumstances at the time. If they were to construct the exact same twelve foot with the two-foot stone trench on the side, that's fourteen feet. It would allow for a six-foot landscape buffer between the two, or it could allow for have them build out the rest of the roadway.
Okay, are there trees currently to be taken down for making this driveway?
Yeah, so I provided an aerial in the packet, where you'll see it is, it is a wooded area today, so.
Yeah, I'm just zooming in on the ortho photo from the, uh, from the town's website, so, um, you know, it's. It it it's a little thin there, and this was, this is a good picture because it takes it in the, what looks like the spring, maybe, because there's really no. Leaves at all on those trees, uh, but you can't see that there is trees, there is an existing buffer. And that's, you know, part of the reason that we tried to offset this thing, uh, have, uh, minimal impact to the butter, but. Um, you know, I think, I think the comments make sense and, uh, willing to, uh, to consider those and. Um, i- if if you have, you know, a defined direction, we'd certainly be willing to consider those, you know, m- maybe one thing we could do is. Possibly clear out an additional four feet along the side here, just in case in the future. Uh, you won't have additional earthwork, you'd really just have to kind of lay down some additional pavement. Um, in in prep for that, but but the limit of disturbance would be the same, and just a suggestion.
Yeah.
Maybe what you end up doing is something along the lines of, you know, just be sure where your plant, you know, based on your current plan. Are you gonna save any kind of decent-sized trees that you would lose if you aligned it? You know, in the center, you you what you build in the center, or if you build it wider. I mean, again, I'm not. Given the small size of it, even with two, I don't want to, you know, be overly religious about it, but I. I think maybe, maybe that is the right thing to do, just, just demonstrate to us that that's what makes most sense.
Okay. Uh, so, ju- just to finish up, Mr. Jim, if I could, so, uh, tot- total length of the roadway, one hundred and eighty feet. Twelve feet of pavement, um, everyone we talked to with the town was adamant, we're not connecting, we don't want to see you connect to one fourteen. We have no intention of connecting to one fourteen. The plus or minus a hundred, a hundred and fifty feet between, uh, one fourteen. And, uh, in in the end of our road, um, I know that's been some, uh. I've read some letters where there may be a concern of that. Absolutely not, no intention to do that. We're not gonna do that, just provide sufficient access to get to the house. Um, the the drainage, the way this works, we we did talk to the town engineer, and it's that basically the the road was pitched to one side. We have a twelve-inch, uh, perforated pipe wrapped, uh, with crushed stone, that unfortunately, there's a, there's a catch basin literally at our project corner. So it kind of works out pretty well, and if we end up expanding, the idea here is, uh, to, you know, to maybe give future ability for sixteen feet. You know, that might be something we could do with just size that, so it has an extra four feet of, uh, uh, of of pavement capturing volume. Um, and then, and then that wouldn't have to be recreated down the road. Um, and then with that being said, uh, you know, the waivers that that we're looking for, and I think Jean kind of went through these. At the end of the day, I think they're specific to your roadway construction and cross-sectional standards. Um, that's essentially what they are, you know, we list, we list eight here, um, but, uh, big picture, in the details, we have eight. Uh, but, but I think those are the, uh, the the big pieces of, um. Um, it it relative to the cross-section in in the road, the standard roadway. Um, and with that being said, uh, entertain any questions you have and try to answer for you.
Okay, there are two butter comments that came in, I think, uh, that are in the packets, I'm gonna read those. Uh, this first one is from John Clem at one sixty-one. Co-It Street, uh, addressed to Jean Enright. Jean, I recently received a legal notice concerning a proposed two-lot subdivision plan located at one seventy-four Co-It Street. Along with associated construction of a roadway, along with associated infrastructure. The premises is located within the R four zoning district. I've been unable to view the plan on the town's website, and by just I reach out to you. I have been living at one sixty-one Co-It Street for the past fifteen years and was aware of the paper street when I originally purpose, purchased the property. I did not feel that the town would ever approve another street off of one fourteen in that area due to the traffic considerations. Charlotte Melé, M E L E, is the current owner of the property since nineteen ninety-two, which is currently under agreement. I want to vehemently voice my disapproval of the proposed subdivision. The look current lot is approximately point six four acres. I have some questions. What will be the new lot size if the subdivision is approved? Will it meet the town's criteria for street frontage? Will it meet setbacks? What type of structure is being considered? One or two family? Has a prospective buyer been notified of impending subdivision by the current owner? Has a prospective buyer been legally notified by the town of proposed subdivision plan? I will probably have other questions as this process continues. In general, I feel the decision is irresponsible on Charlotte's part to put this forward. She won't be living here anymore. How would she feel if her neighbor did that to her? What does she care? It seems that the almighty dollar is driving her decisions. Most of the neighbors that I have spoken with feel the same way. What a, uh, S H, uh, star-star T way to leave a neighborhood after almost thirty years. That was from John Clem. And then there was a comment from Dave Waldrup at one ninety-six Co-It Street. Hi Jean, my only concern with the five-C construction LLC project on one seventy-four Co-It Street. Is making the paper street, Falmouth Street, a through street from Co-It Street to Route one fourteen. This will come, become a cut-through anytime Route one fourteen backs up, which happens a lot. This is the same reason that Co-It Streets, Enfield Street, and Dartmure Street are not connected from Co-It's to Route one fourteen. This is a residential. This is a residential neighborhood with a lot of children. I don't want to see this turn into a busy cut through for the safety of the children, the quietness of the neighborhood. I've seen the builders plans as they are not on, I have not seen the builders plans as they are not on the board's website. So this may have already been addressed. Thank you, Dave Waldrop. So I think we have addressed that just, and just to be clear, there is, this is a driveway off of Katuit Street that will not go down to 114, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And I'm sure any draft decision can, uh, codify that because I agree with, uh, the, both of the butter comments to the extent that they discuss that, you know, there's a big difference between a drive, driveway off of Katuit Street and making Thelma Street an actual road between Katuit and 114, which I think, uh, would not, uh, be appropriate at this time. Okay. Uh, any other board members have questions, comments?
Hey Tom, Mr. Peter, um, is it possible to, uh, comment on the six bullet questions that the first?
Sure.
Can we just, can I ask you to just quickly comment on those?
Okay, yep.
The answers aren't.
What will be the new lot size if subdivision is approved? Do, uh, does the applicant want to answer that one?
Sure. But flipping back to the second sheet in the set, uh, the existing house will keep, uh, 15,219 square feet. And the new law will have 12,504 square feet.
Okay. The second, the second and third questions, I ask if it'll meet the criteria for frontage and setbacks. And Gene, I believe it does, and there are no waivers requested for that. Is that correct?
Yes. And I would just add that, Peter, this is totally appropriate to do in public comment and to respond in public. But I did call this gentleman and did walk through each of these questions. And for when you get to the one about whether the new prospective owners are aware, Realtor.com is the site that I follow and they notice in the, in the advertisement for sale that it is subject to a subdivision. And so the exact lot lines are not determined until that is approved. So.
So Aton, if Gene has already, uh, responded to these bulleted questions, I'm fine. Thank you, Gene.
Okay. I just had one, one family being proposed on the new, um, new law?
Yep, single-family resident.
Okay. And I, I informed him that if they were to pursue a two-family outside of the board's purview, that would require a special permit by the ZBA.
Okay.
And this did strike another question with myself. So in these early discussions, as the applicant has indicated, they reached out to me months ago. I did raise the concern about the rear setback from the deck line not being 30 feet. I know, I certainly know of a bylaw provision that allows for an overhang of a deck up to a certain amount, four feet or 25%, whichever is less, I believe. Did you get confirmation from the builder commissioner that that was in fact true?
So, uh, I, we, we, we read it. Um, we interpreted it. I'm not sure if Mirror from my office is here can confirm if we did get that. Um, but, but if not, I, I will confirm.
Yeah. So I didn't see a confirmation come back. And as I indicated, I'm aware of the provision. I think you're compliant, but we should have the building commissioner, um, confirm that.
Hi Gene, this is Mary from Civil Design. Um, I did the building inspector and we did go through it and he agreed with how we show it. So.
I mean, it, it does look to me like there's enough flexibility with the lines that if you're short a foot or two there, you could jiggle the lot lines around and still get 12,500 square feet. And, you know, if, if you had to do it slightly differently.
Yep. And I believe they did that to account for this deck provision. The deck provision, the bylaw allows for it and they did adjust those. And I just would appreciate if we can get that in writing from the building commissioner.
Okay. So, uh, thank you to Mr. Clem for the comments. Thank you, Gene, for reaching out to him. And I think it was helpful for us to go through those as well. Uh, and also thank you to, uh, Mr. Waldrop for his comments. So I think, I think those comments have all actually been addressed, um, tonight, which is good that those are all addressed in the presentation. Okay. Uh, Kate or Kelly or Aaron, anything?
There's nothing further.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Here, nothing else? John or Peter, anything additional?
Aton, I have.
No, thank you.
Gene?
There was, I have one additional comment. So have you done any test pits on the lot itself? I mean, you're not proposing any stormwater management other than the driveway and the trench. You know the groundwater level or?
So we haven't, we haven't done any, any test pit. We have a very shallow system with only 24 inches deep here. So we, we haven't done that. We would be below this, the, the stormwater management standards for DEP if this were in the jurisdiction. So we haven't done that yet, no.
Okay. So that, a butter indicated that is a very high groundwater table, which is the case in most of North Andover. So he did raise that concern as well.
Yeah. Which is actually, I'm glad you brought that up, Gene, is there much of a slope on the driveway? What's the topography there?
Yeah. So, so you can see at the, the entrance to our driveway, we're at about plus or minus 118. And then down at the road, uh, we're at 114.3. So if you look at our, uh, profile, um, we're a little bit, uh, under three and a half percent. We have a, we have a, I would consider that a gentle slope, a, a good slope to move water, but not too steep.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So for the next meeting, I would expect you're going to add the hammerhead turnaround and respond to any department comments that are required.
Yeah. And, and just for the board's own knowledge, uh, of all, we've, we've done a handful of these, uh, comment letters. We don't take exception with any of them. Uh, we will meet with the fire department now, now that we have something, now that we have kind of your comments. Make sure that they're good. And, uh, when we come back, hopefully we have all, uh, the loose ends cut out.
Great. And if you could just kind of take into consideration our comments about the, um, the roadway, uh, with, and talk with Gene about that and see what you guys can come up with to, uh, maybe make it the best possible, uh, going forward.
Yes.
Okay. So we're going to continue that until? What date?
So December 1st.
Is that enough time?
Yeah. Unfortunately, we have, uh, is it December 1st, a week from today?
Correct.
It is, it is unfortunately.
Well, the December 1st or December 15th. I'll, I'll give you either date. Um, I just want to be realistic.
Yeah, well, well, um, can I, can I attempt for the first, if, if we're in on, uh, Friday or Monday and we can't make it, can we continue to the 15th? Would that be?
Yes, yeah.
We don't have a lot of work to do, but I do have to coordinate with building and fire and then make some adjustments to the plan here. So.
Yeah, that's fine. It just, that's fine.
And, and it's a short week. Aton, would you like to try to have a decision prepared? It's a stretch for the first, but the 15th I probably could.
Yeah. Just do whatever, whatever you can do, Gene. I mean, it, again, if we have, I think it's going to be more likely to be the 15th. So we really have tomorrow and Monday. So I think it's going to be tight. I, I really think we're going to be for the 15th, but I don't mind putting it on the first to, just if everything somehow works out.
Okay.
Okay. But no pressure. Okay. All right. Uh, next we have. What do we have next? 419 and 435 Andover Street, Crosspoint Associates, Inc. Application for a site plan review special permit under Article 8, Part 3, including parking special permit under Article 8, Part 1, and Article 10, 195, 10.7 of the North Andover zoning bylaw. The applicant proposes to redevelop the properties located at 419 and 435 Andover Street by demolishing the existing Ethan Allen and the Bliss Spa and Salon Building, constructing two smaller buildings with a total square footage of 10,852 square feet to house new commercial tenants. Four businesses are proposed on the property, the existing Bertucci's Restaurant, a coffee shop, a medical office, and a bank. Both the coffee shop and bank are proposed to have drive-through operations. The proposed design includes new sight lights throughout the property as well as outdoor patio adjacent to the coffee shop, the installation of an improved stormwater mitigation system, and improved landscaping on site. The parcels are located in the general business zone. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Chapter 38, Section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people they may gather in one place. This public hearing of the North Andover Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and our parties with a right and/or requirement to attend may be found on the town's website at northandover, www.northandoverma.gov. Members of the public who wish to watch or listen to the meeting may do so on their television, on Comcast Channel 8, Verizon Channel 26, or online at www.northandovercan.org. No in-person attendance of members of the public or the applicant or members of the board will be permitted. But every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the town and North Andover website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record proceeding as soon as possible after the meeting. If the public would like to participate in the public hearing, please email your question or comment prior to or during the meeting to j e n r i g h t at northandoverma.gov. A question or comment will be read during the proceeding and responded to accordingly. All right, Gene, why don't you tell us, uh, about what we're, uh, doing here? And then we'll hear from the applicant and then we'll, um, ask questions or comments and read any public butter comments if we have any or public comments.
Okay. So the agenda description provides an overview of the project fairly well. It should be noted that the existing Ethan Allen and Bliss Spa Salon Building currently occupies over 24,000 square feet. The two buildings proposed to be constructed after this building is demolished, total 10,852 square feet, which significantly reduces the building massing on site. Should this application be approved, it would have to get an A and R approval to combine the two lots. And so they're both under separate ownership right now, but the proposal is to combine them for parking and speculation reasons. The application has been sent to Horsley Witten and TEC for both civil and traffic review as well as stormwater. The first initial comments have been submitted to the applicant. The civil and traffic were as late as this afternoon, and so I do not anticipate responses to those at this meeting. But for the next meeting, we should have responses. Department review has been received from Health Conservation, DPW Operations, North Andover Police Department, Building and Fire Department. They have responded to both the DPW operations and the fire department comments, and both of those reviews are, have been satisfied. I am waiting on DPW engineering. As to the requested parking relief, the proposed development will provide 139 spaces where 159 are required. There are 120 existing parking spaces on site. Therefore, they'll provide an additional 20 for this application. I'm sorry, 19 to this application. Approximately 30% of the proposed spaces are compact. They do not meet the bylaw dimensional requirements. These spaces are predominantly existing spaces for Bertucci's and will remain as they currently are. Six new spaces are proposed to be compact. The use of compact spaces permits the applicant to provide additional spaces. Pursuant to a certain bylaw provision, the planning board may modify the design requirements of the parking design provision. Additionally, the applicant is requests, requesting a parking special permit under the provisions for common parking areas and multiple use facilities. Where there are multiple use facilities require parking, the number of parking spaces ordinarily required may be reduced below the sum required for a separate use, provided that the hours, days, or peak parking or loading demands for the uses are so different that a lower total will provide adequately for all uses or activities served by the parking facility or loading deck. And that the location of the parking facility in relation to the uses proposed to be served is appropriate. So the applicant will speak to the parking study report in support of this request.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
That's a good start. I'm, I'm looking forward to attending a meeting where I don't hear about Governor Baker's emergency order. Five or six times.
Me too. I'm looking forward to now reading it.
Somehow I think you must think about that in the middle of the night too. So, uh, uh, my name is Mark Johnson. I'm the attorney representing the applicant. We had submitted a PowerPoint presentation. Um, we can bring it up on the screen. Or Gene, if you want to bring it up, we can do it either way. Uh, but I thought it would make sense to go through the PowerPoint, the overview.
Gene, you want, I, I can share it?
Yeah. As long as we're able to identify it, what, which, uh, which item it is in our packet.
Okay. So it would be the PowerPoint presentation.
All right. So let me see. So that's going to be presentation for, okay, so on, so, uh, yeah, whoever wants to share, please go ahead. This is 419, 435, uh, Andover Street, L1124V3, I assume version 3. Okay.
It was a very good version.
All right. And we're looking at page one to start. Just, just announce which page we're looking at when we go through each.
Sure. Thank you. Uh, why don't we flip to the second page? Uh, tonight you'll be hearing from myself, Jonathan Huber, who is the owner managing principal of Crosspoint, Kerry McCormick, who is the director of development. The civil engineer on the site, um, is Steve Martano from Boller Associates, Sean Kelly from Vaness Associates, the traffic, and Jim Kimball, who is the project architect, um, I believe is here as well. Um, I thought we might start with Jonathan, just giving you some background on who Crosspoint Associates is and how do they end up before you tonight? So Jonathan, I'll turn it over to you.
I can't, I can't see if he's on mute.
He may have called in on a phone as opposed to his name showing.
He, he, he's showing as, as he's faking, so I don't know whether he has a different problem.
Yeah, I can, I can give a quick, a quick overview. So my name is Kerry McCormick. I'm director of development with Crosspoint Associates. Uh, Crosspoint Associates is a New England-based real estate company, uh, currently located in Newton, Massachusetts with properties throughout New England, um, from Maine, uh, down to Rhode Island. But primarily, uh, we focus on grocery anchored, uh, shopping centers. But, um, we have a lot of retail focus throughout the market. Crosspoint's been around since, uh, the late 80s. Uh, it's a vertically integrated. We, uh, do a lot of, uh, acquisition by hold, uh, in, in, and end up, uh, managing, um, for a long term. Uh, so we have our own property management, uh, team on staff that handles, um, maintenance issues throughout, throughout New England as well. Yeah. For this property, we've, uh, we actually are not currently owner, in ownership of the property. Uh, this property is, uh, uh, under control, uh, to allow us to go through this permitting and entitlement process. So we currently have 419 and 435, uh, Andover Street, uh, under control. The, uh, two properties, uh, there are the, uh, existing use of Bertucci's.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yep.
Uh, there we go. Sorry about that, guys. I've never used the, uh, the Google, uh, presentation before. Sorry about that. Um, so again, uh, Jonathan Huber, managing principal of Crossline, I'll kind of rehash some of the stuff Kerry had mentioned. So, uh, we were established in 1989, we're a privately held regional commercial real estate development, investment, and management company. We're headquartered in Newton, Massachusetts. We own and manage, uh, over 3 million square feet of retail, office, lab, industrial, and hospitality re, real estate throughout New England. We currently own properties in every state in New England, uh, spanning from, uh, as far north as Stovermont in Portland, Maine, down to, uh, Quidditch Island, Newport, Rhode Island, and over to Fairfield, Connecticut. The bulk of our portfolio, as, as Kerry mentioned, is community retail and mixed-use shopping centers. Um, and, uh, I thought I would. And I thought I would give you guys some examples of some kind of notable projects that we've completed recently, which you may or may not be familiar with, but we.
To be honest, we actually have a pretty long agenda. We kind of get it, you guys know what you're doing. Why don't we move to actually go, there's a lot to actually talk about with this project and some interesting parts and some potentially troubling parts. So why don't we jump right into that?
Yeah, the only thing is, I think the most interesting thing Jonathan said is some of the other projects, if you could just name them off the top of your head, I'd be interested.
Sure. Newton Nexus, which is along Needham Street in Newton, 150,000 square foot mixed use retail shopping center. Thompson Place in Boston's Fort Point neighborhood in the Seaport, 400,000 square foot mixed use development with Trader Joe's, Thompson Reuters. Trillium Brewery Bar Taco, 927 Exchange, 80,000 square foot shopping center in Natick, Mass at the intersection of nine and 27. Partners Healthcare Staples Advanced Auto Anthony's Coal Fire, Dunkin Donuts Chipotle. The Hilltop, which is formerly known to most people as the Hilltop Steakhouse located along Route 1 in Saugus. It was a joint venture with Avalon Bay, which I think you guys are familiar with as they have a property in North Andover, but 318 apartment units and 25,000 square feet of retail. With Starbucks, 110 Grill, a boxing gym, Salem Five Bank. And then we recently completed the Brenton Hotel, which is a luxury boutique hotel located on the waterfront in downtown Newport, Rhode Island. So those projects span kind of the past five or six years and we've got several others in the pipeline that we're hoping to complete over the next year or two.
Good, thank you.
Great, so I'll just continue with a high level overview of the project and then we'll turn it over to Steve Marano from Bowler to kind of get a little bit more detail on the site. And then we have Sean Kelly from Vanessa Associates can kind of take us through some of the traffic items. So just to get everyone familiar with the location, so we're at 419, 435 Andover Street. So it's at the intersection of Route 114 and Route 125. We're just over 30,000 square feet here, so with the closing of Ethan Allen. We're looking at coming in with two additional new buildings after raising the Ethan Allen building. As Gene suggested, the reduction in square footage would take us down to about 13,000 square foot less space of GLAs. We do know that Mass DOT is currently looking at some redesign work for Route 114 and Route 125. Before we submit our application, we were able to have meetings with both Mass DOT as well as their design team. To walk them through our proposed plan and both meetings were met fairly favorably with our design. So we were able to look at the current design from DOT and they had proposed to close one curb cut, the one closest to Bertucci's. And we were able to accommodate that and and just adjust minor adjustment of the other curb cut off of 114. And then the two curb cuts were proposed to stay on 125, we're maintaining those as well, just adjusting them a little bit further north. Where's like Sean will kind of get into a little bit more detail on that. I just got a couple, just street views to look at, this is from the intersection. Looking back at the Bertucci's building, this is from 114, looking east a little bit, you can see both the buildings. That's slide five, I believe, slide six is on 125, looking south and you can see both buildings there. So I will take you to the proposed site design and walk you through. So again, the Ethan Allen building was proposed to be or is 24,000 square feet. This building A is proposed to be 7,500 square feet. And the building B is 3,300 square feet roughly. The, the change in parking gene actually walked us through, so I'll just mention it real quick is that currently 120 parking spaces where 165 are required. We're providing, we're increasing to 139 parking spaces where 159 are required. So we're reducing the shortage, but we're still under parked by the requirements. But we think with the mixed use and shared uses that this parking is at more than adequate. The location, the buildings are designed specific for three tenants that we have are at least, so. The building footprints, their access and the drive-throughs are per their requirements. So they're actually very specific layouts that we've been able to accommodate on the site. We also were able to include pedestrian connectivity throughout the site coming in on the north off of Andover Street. You can come and navigate to the buildings and across and then out onto Salem Street. With the DOT project, they are integrating a sidewalk along Salem Street or Salem Turnpike. Route 114, so that would be able to connect in. And we've also would are proposing to maintain the access into the site that's currently there from the intersection. As noted, the Bertucci's is is being maintained as is more or less, so we're trying to maintain this front parking for them that is there today. And obviously with the construction would, we'd have to work it around their use and operation and keep them safe. For their customers throughout throughout the construction process.
Both. Can I ask a question?
Yep.
This is, this is a ton. Did drive through for the restaurant coffee shop? Can you just describe, okay, it's that inner lane?
Correct.
And where would you enter the parking lot to get into that lane?
So you would enter in either this location, you would not be able, this would be one way traffic, so it would be signed for one way traffic. So if you entered in off of the northern entrance off of Andover Street, you would have to, you'd circle the building and go into the queue here. If it was.
It's supposed to do.
If it was backed up, you could, you could slide in the order board is leave at this location and the window is at this location for pickup.
And why have that? In that location as opposed to where the bank is? It seems like the bank is something that would have less of a likelihood of a queue for. Drive through, but if it did, there's, there's a lot more room off the street.
Well, this accommodates over 11, I think the 11 car queue is back here or over 10 car queue is back here and it could accommodate accommodate more.
Yeah, I think what Kerry is trying to say is so Starbucks, who is our tenant for the coffee use, requires. A maximum of an 11 car queue due to peak volumes. And this was the way that we could accommodate that that queuing in order to not back up, back up within the site. The bank drive through, on the other hand, only requires a two to three car queue, which is why we moved the bank building over here.
Okay. So I mean, one of the issues that I see is. It's for me, it's difficult to. Evaluate this and maybe your traffic people about it a little bit more in the sense of. Pre-COVID versus during COVID versus hopefully post-COVID. I don't know if any of you are familiar with, there are a couple other drive-throughs Starbucks in the area, ones on Route 114 in Lawrence. And there's another one on Route 125 in on the Haverhill Plasto, New Hampshire line. That one's near my work, my, my law office, and I go by there a lot. And in the months during the pandemic, it's been 30 cars deep and backing up all the way on to 125. You know, into turning into Plasto with a detail cop there for four hours. So it's just a struggle with this. This area is already really congested and I'm trying to figure out and how to evaluate, do we evaluate it with pre-COVID data? Do we evaluate it based on the market change, which has really emphasized drive through, especially coffee shops and restaurants? Do we try to imagine what it's going to be like post-COVID? So I'd, I'd love to hear your comments on that, other board members or traffic people, it's something I'm struggling with.
I can, I can just say that, you know, Starbucks is working to address that. I think one of the concerns right now is I think in a lot of Starbucks locations, they actually don't have interior access. They, a lot of people have have to use the drive-through. What, one of the things that they're incorporating with their design is this new walk-up window, so you can actually order on your phone. And it gives you multiple options for picking up your order, you don't have to just go to the drive-through. So if you do see that the queue in the drive-through is extended past the, you know, point where you don't want to engage it and you'd rather park adjacent to the. The window you can walk over, we've accommodated the parking so that there's access nearby and they can walk up and pick up the. At the pickup window, you can also obviously hopefully post COVID go inside and and pick up your coffee. Order that way and then we'll be seating inside and out. So I think with the innovation of their online order, order ahead in their new window, walk-up window. Hopefully mitigate some of that extensive queuing that you're seeing in some of the locations today.
And one of the interesting facts with Starbucks is now almost 60% of all orders at Starbucks are all done through the mobile app. And they see that trending in that direction moving forward. So they, they see this pickup window as a major way to reduce pressure on any of their drive-throughs.
Hey Ted, I'm glad you brought it up because I'm pretty familiar with that one up in Haverhill as well, because I go that way on occasion. It's good to hear that there might be mitigation, but I guess. Is that absolutely bulletproof or is there a certain amount of risk that we could end up a situation like in that Haverhill one? Because that, it would be far worse here than it is there, because there it's only basically 125, here it's two roads.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, could we get some more data? I mean, I know we haven't gotten to the traffic report yet and I only, I read it quickly. This morning, but it looked like, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the data was pre-COVID. So I don't know if we could get some current traffic data. Kind of showing what the market's like in the area and what the traffic numbers are like in the area. And I don't think there's much of a problem with the 114 one in Lawrence, but I'd like to know with some data on those things. The, the window, I think is a helpful idea. I just don't know, don't know if we, or if we can get data about that, how many people are using that or projected to use that.
So you're looking to evaluate it post, post-COVID without vaccines?
Current, I mean, I mean. Yeah, it's hard to say how long we're going to be in this situation. And I don't know that the market's going to necessarily go back. It seems like people, at least for coffee, may enjoy just driving through. I mean, we know that drive-throughs are pretty much the standard practice and everyone, coffee shop that comes to town asks for a drive-through because that's what people want. And people seem to be willing to wait in lines for that. So if we could, it would just be nice to have current data. I don't know if you can do post-COVID projections, I think that might be a bridge too far to ask, so current data would be helpful.
Aton, wouldn't circulation around here though go through the whole parking lot parcel rather than out onto 125 or 114?
I don't, I don't know, I guess I'm trying to imagine where it would go if it got past. The building, where would the back, where would the queue go? I don't know.
I'm just saying there must be a way to direct traffic so that if you're pulling in off of 125. From the middle entrance that you're, you're either forced to loop around the building to get into line rather than.
So one area we're looking at, a little crescent moon here that could be signed here that wouldn't allow anybody to get, you know, bought back up. They, they would be directing them to actually circle the building and come back in line. So that would be one means of kind of mitigating that. People would come in and see that and have to be directed directly down and then they'd circle the building, so they'd be maintained internal to the site.
Yeah, but if you had, go ahead, John, sorry.
I was going to say the, the pinch point right there is in the morning of the traffic is really bad. So if somebody's turning in at either of those two entrances on the right and the queue backs up. It would be really easy for it to back up onto 125 and then that has a cascading effect. And, and I mean, in the end, I'm not trying to be overly scrupulous because I think you guys have thought through this probably better than most people have. But I think it's, it's something that has to be addressed and, you know, maybe those mitigating things would prevent that circumstance. In 99% of the time, and I think that's what, that margin of error is what we're looking for.
Aton, can I ask a question?
Yeah, and I just like before, I like, I like these ideas for places, I think these are, these uses, the bank, the urgent care, the coffee shop. I think these are good uses for this location, just the, the, the traffic and the drive-through are concerning. So the more data we can have, the better, but go ahead, Gene.
So I believe it was Jonathan that indicated that Starbucks standard is 11 car queue. Is that, is that pre-COVID or do you have any more recent evaluation during COVID of what that queue has extended to?
That was, that is their prototypical standard and has been for, you know, on all their new development stores for the past year. So I don't have, and I don't, nor do I know if Starbucks has that, that data yet. We can certainly ask that question, but this, this has been approved and vetted internally with their operations group. And they are extremely stringent on what they approve and allow for, for drive-throughs in particular with their queue. So, and obviously this is a relocation within the market, so they know the volumes that they do at the existing location. As well as the potential volumes that they will be doing at this location. So we will certainly reach out to them and see if we can get any kind of data with regard to, you know, post-COVID. Drive-through numbers and, and be ready to present that if we can get that information for the next time we come in front of you.
Great, yeah, I mean, Gina, at some point I'd like, once the peer reviews gone back and forth and comments have been addressed, maybe to have. The peer reviewer in to discuss this too. I really think that's, the traffic's the big, big issue on this one.
Yeah, I, I mean, Eton, I think that, I think you're right, there's a pinch point with traffic, but from an overall perspective. They're taking the density of the property down, now maybe the more intensive uses, but I think, you know, the one thing that struck me about this. Is that the whole layout in landscaping and everything is far more rational than it is today.
I agree with that, but. How many people went to the Ethan Allen in the last five years, like one a day? I mean, there's, there is a reason it's out of business and, and quality store, but nobody was ever in that parking lot. The Bertucci's was busy pre-COVID and, you know, so I think it's a great use. I think I do, I agree, I like the landscaping, I like what they're proposing. I, you know, just, it just strikes me as something where we just have to be careful of the side effects of, because it looks really good. And just, just to weigh that out.
Okay, all right, we'll, we'll work to address those for next time.
Okay, Peter or Kate or anyone have comments before we let them continue?
Go ahead.
No. Continue on.
All right, yeah, why don't you continue on?
I think, I think we covered the site pretty well. Take you through Jim Kimball from Phase Zero, design is not, not on tonight, so I'll just share some of the elevations. So if you look at the bottom right corner of this four, four screen, four sided elevations. That is, would be the front side that you'd be looking at kind of at it at a little bit of an angle, but from Route 114. The, uh. The urgent care is a little bit more prominent to give it a little bit more visibility for the, the specific use. And the coffee shop Starbucks is adjacent to showing the walk-up window that we were talking about and the drive-through window on the side. The, it's a mix of materials from cement fiber board with also kind of standing seam roof integrated in for the roof and the awnings. for the roof and the awnings. Um, but a mix of materials that are, um, you know, e- easily maintained and, and hardy, um, for the, for New England. Um, and then, um, on this, this, uh, upper left is the, uh, east elevation or the side that would be facing Andover Street, um, integrated, um, some windows into the office spaces through their care and, and again, the tower element is only, um, portion of it is the front portion. So it's, uh, less than fifty percent of the building is the kind of tower element for it. And, uh, to the, to the right is the rear, um, really just egress, uh, points and the, uh, the bottom left corner is the side elevation for the, um, Starbucks drive-through.
Could you sort of give me a comparable look and feel? I'm sort of, this looks pretty generic, but I think there's probably more nuance to it than that, but, uh, kind of a comparable look you're trying to get at?
I can, I, I wasn't able, we didn't have them before we submitted the, um, PowerPoint and I wasn't sure if we would, um, have it. I can, I have, um, renderings now, if you can see them. Uh, these were not submitted.
So.
Uh, maybe, maybe.
Aton, if they were not submitted, they're not in the board packet.
Yeah, so it's.
We should carry to the next meeting.
Yes, please. Yeah.
Okay, um, so I, I think what you're still.
So we're covering attractions for the next meeting. Great, thank you.
Okay, so yeah, so we have them. I apologize. We didn't get them completed in time. Uh, but I think they'll, they'll give a little bit different representation with this, uh, rather than these flat elevations. The next, the next one we have is a rendered perspective of the bank building. So these are, uh, a little bit higher resolution, high quality. Um, again, same thing, so cement fiber board materials, uh, used, uh, used for, uh, since, uh, replicating wood and, and stone materials. Bro, you kind of used quite a bit in a lot of, uh, retail projects currently. Um, and then this would be one looking from the parking lot to the main entrance, um, from the parking lot there. So that's a single story, uh, single tenant building for the, um, for the bank. And then I think unless anybody has any questions on the kind of architectural component, I will make sure we have the, uh, rendered perspectives of the building A and the urgent care for next time.
Great, thank you.
Okay, all right. Um, so now I'll just, I'll turn it over to, uh, Steve and he can kind of walk through, uh, a little bit more detail on the site and civil.
Yeah, great. Thanks, Kerry. Everybody hear me? You got a thumbs up?
Yes.
Good. All right, great. Um, just, uh, we, we hit a lot of the highlights there and, and really that entryway coming off of Andover Street. Um, one of the things that Kerry did mention, um, is we do have a pedestrian walkway coming off of that, uh, northernmost curb cut off Andover Street, uh, that, that drove some of the design. How do we get, how do we accommodate both vehicles, uh, as well as create some better pedestrian environment here? Um, and I'll, I'll talk through some of the nuance, but just trying to, trying to enhance those connections, building off of what the state is doing. Obviously, we'll, we'll hear more about the roadway projects, uh, that impact both one fourteen and one twenty-five. Uh, and then, um, how do we work off of that? How do we build it in today's, you know, so it works today with what's out there currently? And then how's it going to work when the, when the state project comes through and make sure that all marries up? So a lot, a lot of pieces to consider in the layout, um, and that impacts where our curb cuts laid out, uh, as well as how we get, uh, pedestrians and vehicles through here. So we talked, talked a lot about, uh, some of the vehicular flows and I'll get back to the pedestrian connection, but I want to get through some vehicular connections and then some grading as well. So a lot of, a lot of things to consider, but, um, we tried to orient, really, if you look in the center of the site, kind of where the, where the Starbucks drive-through would come out, we, we tried to make that really like a four-way intersection. How do we make sure people aren't using this as a cut through? So let's not give direct routes. Let's put some traffic signage, some stop signs and controls to make it a, a slower environment. So we kind of stop folks at this intersection. Uh, and that, um, actually lines up very well where people would be exiting that, that Starbucks drive-through and, and some of the concern we heard in early conversations with the town is, let's make it easy for them to get out to all roadways. So, uh, that exit point, uh, works well for that. And it also, uh, high visibility area and that's sort of gives you whatever, wherever you're going, that's the main point of the site. And then you can circulate to a parking space or out to one fourteen or out to one twenty-five. So great. Uh, that, that was a kind of one of the key design elements. Uh, the other piece we're, we're really trying to accommodate is, is, um, you know, ways to get into those drive-throughs, not just from that first curb cut on Andover Street, which is, uh, you know, you'd have to go around the building, but, uh, but which might be very convenient if you're going to the bank though, right? So we're trying to balance where people are coming and going and how to get them there in some logical fashion. So that, that again, back to that four-way intersection, that really helps get, uh, you know, you can have some directional signage and get people to wherever they're trying to go, whatever use, where they're parking, a drive-through or, and, and equally easy to get out. So that, that drove a lot of our, our layout decisions. Um, and then uh, the other piece we're wrestling with while we're, while we're working through the layout, might look great in two D. Uh, but when you factor in the three D, there's a, there's a twenty-foot grade change we're trying to navigate here as well. So uh, again, looking up that, that northernmost, uh, curb cut, uh, on Andover Street, it's the grades elevation one twenty. When you get down, uh, south of the bank on Salem Turnpike there, it's nineteen feet lower. So, uh, a lot of grade change to deal with. So how, how do we make that comfortable? Again, vehicular and pedestrian wise, so, um, uh, we had to, to soften the entrances off of Andover Street. Currently, they're, they're very, very steep coming in. Um, thirteen, fourteen percent driveways coming in and we generally, uh, you know, try not to be that steep, uh, especially coming out. Um, so we've softened them to eight or nine feet, which kind of picks that, 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 uh, you know, the, the urgent care and, and, uh, coffee shop need to be picked up a little relative to current grades in the site. So we've, we've got some grading things we're dealing with there too. The other piece of that is the pedestrian route. We need to make it ADA accessible. So you'll notice we, we come from Andover Street down to the urgent care. We continue to slope across the face of the urgent care. Uh, and it basically, we try to keep the driveways under five percent there. So we don't have ramps for the accessible route. And we can bring sidewalks through, uh, it's more comfortable for, for folks that, that need, uh, an accessible route. Uh, and aesthetically, uh, also looks better in, in those environments. So, uh, trying to balance those things as well. And then you can see it comes down, uh, across the, the coffee shop continues down across the parking there and then uh, across the face of the bank. And then we do have a little bit of, uh, we have a set of stairs there to get down to the turnpike, to Salem Turnpike, uh, but we have, uh, another accessible route that sort of goes up the page and then connects into the, to the future DOT sidewalk. So, uh, a bunch of things to factor in and we played with a lot of iterations of that. How do you get the pedestrians through the property? Create this new connection that doesn't exist today. You'd have to just walk through the parking lot. Um, and then how do we keep the buildings, uh, at, at certain elevations? And we have a, we have a grading plan, but it's, it's not as fun to look at as the colored rendering site plan. Uh, so I don't want to spend a lot of time on that one. It's, it's uh, at the scale, it's a little difficult to see, but, uh, especially where you have twenty feet of contour grading and spot shots to, to tell that story. So I'm happy to dig in and dive into the, the grading and more, but that's, that's sort of big picture, how we got to this layout. Um, obviously we took some, some good opportunities here and, and we heard it before that, that, that it looks a lot better, right? We, we took some opportunities to get, uh, interior landscaping, that, that, that's a recommendation or requirement in, in the, in the bylaw that, that was non-existent on the site today. Uh, so we, we took some opportunities to create some green spaces, actually get some good areas. There's that larger triangle area and in the middle of that rear parking field that that's gives you opportunity to put some even bigger vegetation in there, which is, which is a, a, a nice opportunity. Um, and then you can see we've, we've given, uh, the tree presence again on, on the streets. Uh, and, and we do have a, a larger buffer, um, in, in certain areas. And again, it gives you a better chance to get some bigger vegetation in there. So hu- huge improvement, um, aesthetically. Uh, and, and then we, we do have, uh, an increase in parking. So, you know, there's, there's not a lot of new green space per se. It's just better organized and, and make better use out of it, uh, to be, uh, to, to just really enhance that. Really break up that parking field, break up the impervious area and, and bring in some shade trees. Um, so, which obviously has some great environmental impacts as well. Um, I think the only other thing I'll touch on is just, uh, obviously for the two blue buildings, which are the new buildings, all the utilities, we're undergrounding, you know, some overhead, uh, electrical and telecom, telecommunications wires. We've got some pretty discreet locations for transformers that are shown on the plan. Um, we've, uh, you know, there's basically the, the storm drainage on site today is about as equivalent to the interior landscaping on site today. There, there really is none. Um, so we've, we basically are creating a brand new, uh, drain system. Um, again, a little bit of a challenge in that arena is, uh, Bertucci's is not really part of the construction project. We're keeping it, we're keeping, um, their parking lot as is, but just the nature of where the site drains and has always drained. Uh, we're going to capture all that Bertucci's runoff in our drain system. We're going to treat it. We're going to have some new infiltration. So we're not just addressing the two new buildings. We're, we're addressing the existing, uh, Bertucci's building and their parking lot as well with the drain system. So um, I know we have some, uh, peer review comments. I, I think we'll be able to, to work through those. Um, but generally, uh, in agreement with the approach of, uh, obviously capturing all the runoff, running it through treatment devices, cleaning it up, infiltrating and, and it really, uh, all the water today just runs over land into, for, just for probably popular reference, the Burger King parking lot. Um, so all the water runs off there today. On big storms, it's still going to run off into the Burger King parking lot, but we've got uh, outlet control structures, uh, again, treatment devices that it runs through before it gets there. And for very small storms, they'll never, that, so that, what Kerry's pointing at here, there's a large underground infiltration system and detention system, uh, that'll be under the parking lot. So you won't see that. Um, and then that's, that's before it gets in to that, there's some treatment devices that, that clean the water, take out oils and greases, uh, and sediment is, is the biggest culprit that we're trying to get rid of. Uh, so those get taken out and then, uh, anything over, over the, uh, you know, DEP design storms and, and the town has their elevated, uh, rainfall requirements. So the systems uh, factors in a eight, eight point six inch rainstorm, which is, uh, probably larger than a lot of folks have ever seen. Uh, it's, it's a very large storm, but we're, that's a, that's a sort of a proactive measure based on climate change and uh, some of these storm intensities that we've seen increasing over time. So it's, it's a good approach. It's a, it's a very robust system and think it's going to have a big benefit to the area. So, um, I could talk about that all day because I'm the civil engineer, but I'm sure you want to hear more about the traffic. So, uh, with that, over to, to Sean Kelly to, to tell you about the traffic.
Thank you.
Uh, thanks, Steve. Um, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Again, for the record, Sean Kelly with the NASA Associates. Uh, if it pleases the board, I think what I'd like to do tonight is, um, briefly walking through our traffic study, the work that we've done, uh, what our findings were, what our conclusions are, then happy to answer any questions that members of the board may have. So, um, you know, I think we're, we're probably all pretty familiar with the project site. You know, again, we're located at the intersection of Route one fourteen and Route one twenty-five. Um, both one fourteen and one twenty-five are under state jurisdiction with Mass DOT. So we will be required to get a highway access permit from, from DOT for the project. Uh, we've had some preliminary meetings with District Four staff reviewing the project. So they're, they are informed and we, we have reviewed some of the issues relative to access and things they're doing along the corridor. Um, in terms of the study area, you know, we looked at the locations that are likely to accommodate the, the majority of traffic. Uh, quite frankly, on, on one fourteen, those are the intersections with one thirty-three to the west, um, one twenty-five immediately to the east of us. Uh, we looked at the, the morning peak hours, morning commuter peak, the evening commuter peak, and then the Saturday midday. Um, the morning and evening, again, those are your busiest hours. You have about twenty-three to twenty-five hundred cars an hour on Route one fourteen. Um, the Saturday midday is lower. It's around seventeen hundred daily flow in the quarter is about thirty-two thousand. Um, the, the data that we used, we, uh, we actually were quite fortunate because Mass DOT is currently in the process of um, doing an entire quarter redesign, um, everywhere from Waverly Street to the west to Willow East. And it's a, it's a substantial project. It involves a, a number of upgrades to both the vehicular and pedestrian infrastructure, um, coordination of nine traffic signals, um, introduction of, and I'll get into it in more detail, um, bicycle and pedestrian accommodations, but collected traffic count data pre-COVID. So we're able to use that data, um, as the basis for our analysis. You know, many of the volumes in this area down thirty percent because of COVID, but all of our analysis is based on data that was collected ahead of that time. Uh, also looked at safety in the area, that the intersections that we studied, you know, quite frankly, below the average crash rate from DOT. Um, but we do recognize that there was a road safety audit done for this quarter in the last, um, few years that had some fixed safety recommendations and those have actually been incorporated into the design, um, currently under review with Mass DOT. Vince, Vince, slide Kerry. So the plan here, and I'll just kind of walk through what DOT is looking to do, um, in the area. This is Route one fourteen, um, along our frontage. The, the Bertucci's building is, it's kind of dashed out in the top, um, right corner there. Um, the plan, what DOT is looking to do is in this area really is to improve the pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure. Um, there'll be new sidewalk along the, the northern side of one fourteen, including along our frontage. Reconstruction of the driveways to have ADA compliant, um, crossings, wheelchair ramps, um, what have you. On the southern side of the corridor, the plan is to introduce a multi-use path that can accommodate both, um, pedestrian and bicycle activity. Um, again, this is a run for a lo- long stretch along the corridor, including along our frontage. Go to the next slide. Uh, this is the intersection of, of one twenty-five and one fourteen, the corner where we are. That's the Bertucci's where the cursor is. Um, some significant improvements at this intersection. Again, uh, major upgrades to the pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure, including the crossings, the second glass crossings of, of all four approaches, uh, along Route one twenty-five. Today, there, there are no bicycle accommodations. The plan is to have a bicycle lane along both sides of the corridor, along the east and west side is showing the plans. And then from a capacity standpoint, one of the, the major improvements that will, will, will be a benefit for this project is coming south on one twenty-five, that, that left turn movement is a very heavy movement, particularly in the morning hour. And they'll be widening the corridor to go from, uh, one exclusive lane and then a shared left through right, to have actually two exclusive lanes that accommodate, you know, nothing but left turn movement. So, um, it's, it's, it's a major benefit in terms of capacity, intersection operations and queuing. Uh, we jumped to the next slide.
John, can you just call out the slide number? You're on slide twenty-four now.
Oh, sure.
Question, um, related to the, what you just talked about with the, uh, effectively adding one lane to one twenty-five to
Sure.
the left-hand turn. Is that going to dig into like where the current, uh, end of the roadway is? Like we'll dig into the, where it appears to be the property, but like the part of the right way?
There, there, there is some widening. So absolutely, yes. Though I mean, it's today, it's, it's two lanes and there's no bike lane. Um, there's no sidewalk on the opposite side of the street. So yes, the, the entire cross section of one twenty-five in that area, um, does get widened out. The only have now. And then this plan here essentially shows Mass DOT's plan for our frontage along one twenty-five. The two crosswalks you see there, those are the curb cuts that we have today that essentially in the same location just reconstructed to meet ADA design criteria. And again, we, um, as, as part of the project, you know, we're going to push these driveways further to the north to create additional separation from the signal beyond what's shown in this plan here. That's essentially where Mass DOT is at in terms of, uh, the improvements in the area. Um, I think we can jump to the next slide probably, uh, to the project, um, you know, we, we rely on data that's published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers of the ITE. The ITE is a, for, for decades now compiled data at existing, you know, retail, office, residential facilities, you name it. And essentially for any land use code now, depending on the size of, of the development, you can accurately project how much traffic you can expect on a daily basis and then during peak hours. And for this assessment, you know, there were really three, three land use codes we utilized, um, nine thirty-seven coffee shop with a drive-through window, uh, nine twelve drive-in bank and then seven to ten medical office space. You know, we, we ran the numbers and it tells you how much traffic you can expect during peak hours, both inbound and outbound, as well as, you know, daily. We really drilled down the peak hours and we do these assessments is, is very conservative in that the, the peak hours of the facility will coincide with the peak hours, the roadway to really present a, you know, worst case scenario. Um, one thing I would point that when you, you do, you know, coffee shops and banks, we drive through. One thing I would point that when you you do, you know, coffee shops and banks, we drive through. A a large percentage of that traffic, particularly during peak hours, is is not new traffic. It's passed by traffic. The IT data says that for a coffee shop, typically ninety percent of the traffic during peak hours is passed by. It's. People that are already traveling to work that stop and get their coffee on the way at a convenient location. The bank's a little lower, around forty percent. You know, we take a little bit more conservative, you put eighty and thirty. But when you when you net out those pass by trips, what we what we left with is that the project is going to generate. About a car per minute entering or exiting or less during peak hours. You know, in the morning, it's about seven, seven trips. In the evening, it's about eighty seven, and then Saturday is the highest at one twenty.
What are the peak hours are you considering?
We look at the weekday morning, which is your seven, nine in the morning. We look at the weekday evening, which is typically four to six in the evening. And then we look at the Saturday midday, which falls somewhere between eleven in the morning and and two in the afternoon. And again, whatever whatever that busiest hour is, so for instance, if if the counts show us that. Said this hour is eleven forty five to twelve forty five. We assume that the busiest hour of this project will coincide with that busiest hour of the road. So we really look at the worst case scenario of. You know, the busiest time for this project overlaid on the busiest conditions that we have.
Do you know the seven to nine is the peak hour for that area or is that what the distinction that you looked at? Or did you look at a larger swatch and and know that seven to nine was the peak?
We we looked at seven to nine because again, we we relied on the nasty data that they were using as part of the one fourteen design. And seven to nine was the the hours they took. But that's typical. I mean, I would say ninety five or ninety nine percent of the studies that we do, your peak is going to be somewhere between seven and nine. Unless there was a use that just happened to generate, you know, more, but this area, seven to nine is typical.
Peter, do you have any questions here? Okay. Do you have any data? During COVID, because again. This data is helpful to a point. But the market has gone through somewhat of an unexpected change. And so I think. These kind of numbers about what you might expect for a coffee donut shop, drive through bank. Those, you know, drive through banking has significantly increased. Why didn't my power just go out? That's weird. Okay. So drive through banking has significantly increased. And. Coffee shop drive through has significantly increased. So just wanted to get to me your thoughts on using.
Yeah.
If there is any current data. And then one of the things that was mentioned previously was that this is a transfer location from in the area. And that people would be coming, we could get a sense of the numbers of people because it's already an open area, an open store. But you're saying that more people, it's I where they whether they pass by. So how do you kind of? Work with those two factors?
Well, yeah, certainly the the data that we've utilized is 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 pre COVID and I. I absolutely agree, you know, anecdotally, the Starbucks near me, I certainly see. Qs that are longer than what you had seen prior to COVID and that's. You know, due to the fact that you you can't go inside, so you're you're forced to use the drive through. You know, I think as you know, as Kerry pointed out, you know, they do plan to have a walk up window here where you can work off your phone. So. That should, you know, peel off some of that demand in the drive through, but I I I understand the concern and certainly we can take a look at. You know, what the conditions are during COVID. I mean, ideally, you know, given the the construction schedule for the project, you know, the fact that we still have to go through a round of mass DOT permitting. You know, I think the hope is that this will dovetail nicely that by the time this is. Gets through all the state regulatory permitting and and construction that hopefully we, you know, we're we're getting out of COVID situation, but I but I do understand the concern. Today, under existing conditions, cer- certainly it's longer. But again, just getting back to the to the trip generation, I think I didn't want to point, I want to make sure I point out is that these number here are the. The traffic that the project generates, that there will be some reduction with the removal of, you know, Ethan Allen and the spa. Certainly, it's not a not a real heavy, heavy number, but you know, we counted it, you know, in the peak hours, they do up to thirty five trips. So. You know, when you pull those numbers out, these increases show the chart, particularly during the peak hours are even are even lower, but even even looking at just on on face value, it's a. It's about a car a minute, you know, coming and about a car a minute leaving in terms of new traffic. Now, not all this traffic, you know, comes along the same route. We're going to have some traffic from the east, some from the west, some from. One twenty five to the north, some from the south, some even from one thirty three. So. When you break it out of all the different routes that access the site, you know, that increase isn't even a car a minute on any given route. It's really going to be a car every four to five minutes on any given route. So it's not a substantial increase in new traffic to the area.
Are there any entrances other than on Andover Street?
Well, there's a there's an entrance on one fourteen. So if you were coming. If you're coming up past Merrimack Hall, you know, if you you could, you could make the left at the light. And on fourteen, if you're coming from the north on one twenty five, you'd come in that way. The the point I make is just that no one given road segment is going to experience even an increase of new car a minute. It's going to be split amongst. The multiple approaches that provide access to the site. And then last slide. I'm sorry, the conclusion, conditions again, and and we have had a chance to go through the. The T E C peer review, I'll get into that in a moment, but. You know, the project related traffic increases, you know, it's about a car a minute during the peak hours. You know, following the implementation of the DOT improvements, operations are improved and and the project's impacts are fairly minimal. You know, we take, we took a close look at the parking supply for this project. I I know we, you know, we don't meet the zoning requirement and we're asking for some relief there. The nice thing about this site is that the the uses really couldn't be more complimentary in terms of. You know, parking demand and being able to share parking spaces. Your Starbucks peak is typically in the morning, you know, the Bertucci's peak doesn't really start until noon and. More towards the evening when Starbucks isn't that busy. The the bank use really doesn't have a high parking demand throughout the day, but it closes down typically early on the weekends. The medical office, again, it's it's a fairly even demand across the day and then their weekend demand is much lower. So. You really don't ever have a time that these four uses are at the same time and creating a a combined demand. We we ran the numbers and. What we found is that the the peak demand actually is is around noon, both on a weekday and a Saturday where. You're getting some traffic with Bertucci's, the medical office is open, the bank's doing some. Starbucks doing less than they would in the morning, but that combined number, you know, is the highest of the four cumulative. And what it works out to is about. Eighty seven to eighty nine occupied spaces, you know, we're providing a hundred and that was a hundred and thirty nine. So we're we're showing that we're going to have a surplus of above fifty spaces, you know, during that busiest time at lunchtime. And again, it's. Simply due to the fact that we're we're never going to have a condition where all these uses are peaking at the same time. So again, our recommendations really are really despite access, you know, as Kerry pointed out, the DOT plan is to close the driveway to Bertucci's on Route one fourteen. You know, that's closest to the signal and we agree with that. It's a good idea, you know, that's only a little over a hundred feet from the corner. When cars are coming around the bend from one twenty five, it's a, you know, it's it's not an ideal location and closing it certainly will improve safety and operations. We're also, we've we've submitted our plans to DOT's consultant that's designing these improvements and we're going to continue to coordinate with them. To ensure that our plans, you know, mesh and that it works from an access standpoint with what they were doing out there. The onsite circulation, again, you know, we're we're showing eleven vehicles now. I do know that, you know, T E C did comment that we could strike that drive through lane further along the medical office frontage. And pick up some more space, so we probably could get, you know, fifteen vehicles. And we'll we'll definitely take a closer look at the the queuing issues related to COVID. Improved pedestrian connectivity. I know that, you know, Steve and Kerry went through this in in detail, but. You know, the site stage has really no pedestrian infrastructure to speak of. The proposed plan will have connectivity between one fourteen, one twenty five through a, you know, dedicated pedestrian routing through sidewalks and crosswalks that are all ADA compliant. So it's certainly, you know, it's an upgrade and it'll blend well with the new infrastructure that DOT is proposing on one fourteen. And then lastly, transportation demand management, you know, it's it's a commercial site, so you know, they'll certainly promote, you know, off peak scheduling, but. Most retail users don't work a typical nine to five. You know, we recommend evaluating the potential for a bike rack. You know, direct plaza, things of that nature to to minimize the number of trips, particularly for employees. Again, I think that the improvements to the pedestrian infrastructure will likely draw some walking trips from Merrimack, you know, to keep the the demand down. That's really, you know, where we are. Again, we've we've met with DOT. We're going to continue to work with them as as their design evolves on one fourteen and one twenty five and. And ensure that our access design, you know, fits seamlessly with that with their work. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Hey, Tom. Now, I want to follow up on Kelly's earlier question. I think I firmly grasped. Your explanation, even the seven to nine is the peak. And that's what you've got from DOT. So appreciate that. What I hear was how do you know that the peak does not actually start at six?
Well, I mean, we could, we could certainly review the data, but I, you know. At the end of the day, you know, DOT is doing an exhaustive review in the design of the entire one fourteen quarter where they look at. Peak period, and they're designing the entire fourteen system to make the busiest hour. They're identifying seven to nine as the busiest hour. So I, you know, I expect that is the case. But we, you know, we're relying on their data because quite frankly, it's more, it's more real data due to COVID. But I'll 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 review it and ensure that that is the peak, but I. If they're using seven to nine for their design of the quarter, the timing, I suspected, you know, it certainly would be the busiest hour. But but I will confirm that and ensure that is the case.
As a person who actually, until the COVID hit, would drive through that intersection every morning to go to the train station in Andover. It quarter after six is not too bad, but by seven forty, it's pretty heavy. So. It starts to grow rapidly, probably somewhere around quarter after six, six thirty.
Sure.
Yeah, it's a straight shot to the bypass into Boston. I think especially putting in a drive through for early morning traffic may be a good draw.
Yeah, I would appreciate it if you could give us an assessment of. Whether or not the peak starts prior to the seven to nine window. Great. And Gene, can we just have that as one of the actions?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hey, this is Aaron. Just one point I wanted to make is along the lines of the the morning rush hour. No matter when the the peak tends to fall. Is that you're going to have a lot more morning traffic into this site, entering, exiting. And there's bound to be some, for lack of a better term, turbulence, because you got. Now cars that have got their coffee and whatever else. Making that right turn to get through the intersection to go to Andover or down the bypass. It it it. It seems like there's. You're going to, yeah, you're going to create some like turbulence there with cars making the right turn, then trying to shift to maybe make that. Double left turn on to one fourteen. I'd like some. Understanding of. It's a it's some clarification as to whether that. Process, that circulation has been thought of in this design.
Well, certainly, you know, we, yes, I mean, when we did the design, we looked at, you know, how the operations are and what the queue and. And projected operations are quite frankly, when this when this improvement's done. I mean, today, I I think if you were dealing with the, you know, the single lane left, you know, it would be a much more difficult maneuver. But the the analyses are showing that with the the double left plus the inside lane. You know, that queue is going to clear through on a on a typical cycle. So. You know, even if the queue was blocking the driveway, for instance, you want to make that left, you're going to get through in one cycle, waiting on the drive to pull out. So. You know, we have looked at it. It's a better condition than there is today. It allows you to get into that left turn lane, you know, without having the stacking that you have. Where it's occurring in one lane and the inside lanes being shared with the threes and rights.
Just to clarify too, you're gonna. Fix the grading, so it's not like a steep hill to get out of that. Right now, it's tough to pull out of there.
Yeah, I know Steve can speak more to the to the actual grades, but that's that's definitely my understanding is that the pitch of the driveways will be much less severe than they are now.
Right, we're doing, we're doing two things. One, we're softening the actual slope of the driveway and two, we're providing a little more of a leveling. Spot at the top, so we're gonna just really smooth out that exit coming out at our entrance, whatever move you're making. So. They'll be much more comfortable than the current condition.
John, do I understand correctly that the intersection of Peter Street, one twenty five and Andover Street is not taken into consideration? For the level of.
We we didn't include that in that intersection and we we did get a comment from T E C requesting that we take a look at what the volume. Increases at that location relative to what's out there today. So we we will respond to that as part of our, you know, response document to D C's comments. We didn't include the northern edge of the northern. Triangle intersection, if you will.
Just a question as people are coming in off of one twenty five and looking to make a left hand turn, for example, into. Starbucks either into the the first or second turn. What kind of controls or what do you do to keep one twenty five from backing up? They're trying to make that left hand turn over those those lanes as an issue now.
Well, the again, we've, what what? Two things, the the queuing that exists today will will be, you know, greatly reduced because of the fact that you're going from the. The two lane section to a three lane section. Coupled with the signal improvements with the entire intersection will be coordinated, so they work in a lot more efficient manner. But the driveway you you see here where they where they're showing it, we're actually shifting that driveway further north. So we're providing additional additional separation to make that left turn in the site. Easier, you know, in terms of where it is relative to those left turn lanes. But if we can go to the site plan. The color. So when you when you make that left turn in, you you won't be able to make the quick left, you know, it's a one way drive out coming. You know, the driver that runs parallel to Andover Street. I know we've looked at maybe putting a Crescent Island in there as well to to further enforce that, but. But what ultimately happens is you have to come in and circulate the building to get into the the drive through lane. You know, you have to wrap around the building entirely. I mean, maybe some instances, if you come in off peak and there's no one at the the drive through, you know, menu board that you can. You know, shift over and just sneak in there, but but we expect that during the morning that, you know, the queue will wrap, you know, up to the side of the building and that you'll have to go around the building and get into it. We were showing with that striped lane ends for the drive through that that would accommodate about eleven vehicles. One of the comments T E C made is, you know, why not just extend that lane even further? You know, run it all the way back to kind of where that blue spaces, the blue cars parked. And then you can pick up another handful of vehicles. So I. I suspect when everything's said and done, we're probably going to be in the order of. You know, fifteen or so vehicles, which exceeds what you would typically see for a Starbucks in in non COVID, you know, conditions, but. But the intent certainly is that with that northern driveways, we we don't want that to become an area with this friction. Where there's multiple maneuvers and people are trying to make lefts, you know, it really is going to run in a. A one way circulation around the building and use the entire frontage of the building. To the extent usable to accommodate that queue to to minimize the impacts, you know, and ensure we're not backing up into the street.
Alright, so you're, so the the plan is to have traffic moving fast enough along one twenty five. To Salem Turnpike that people coming off of. One fourteen to one twenty five will be able to take that left. The traffic will move. Fast enough because now it's going, trying to take a left across the three lanes of traffic into the plaza. So you think that the timing of the lights will account for that?
Well, that and we're 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 just pushing that driveway further back. I mean, we've got, you know, at this point, we have three lanes of storage, the entire frontage of the site. So we've. We've moved it, we moved the driveway really as physically far away from the intersection as you can to to avoid any impacts from that queuing.
Alright, so anybody looking to get into the site from Andover Street, heading north on Andover Street would take this northernmost access point.
Oh, they can't turn. They wouldn't turn into that first one.
They wouldn't.
Okay, anything else for tonight? So next steps are get. Comments looked at, responded to. And then maybe we can. Meet up again after that and. I I'd like to hear from T E C, Gene, i- if there's still things outstanding, especially.
Yeah, well, there certainly are now because the initial comments just came in today. So the applicants need to look and respond. I guess I would ask the same question. Do you do you think you've advanced this project enough by December first or should it continue to the fifteenth?
I think the fifteenth.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would agree. Okay, so let's continue this hearing to the fifteenth. Thank you very much for the presentation tonight.
Yeah, good night.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.
That's it for our public hearings, discussion item. That's it for our public hearings. Discussion item two forty-three, Great Pond Road. Wind Hill Builders Civil Design Request for a watershed special permit to allow for conversion of a portion of the existing deck to patio, expansion of the existing deck, relocation of an existing fence and the construction of a koi pond with associated field stone walls within the non-discharge and non-disturbed zones of the watershed protection district. Okay, Wind Hill Builders Civil Design.
Good evening. I'm Bill Hall with Civil Design Consultants. So basically, I'm going to try and share my screen here. Okay, so this is the plan that was submitted with the waiver request. What we have on the left is the existing conditions. On the right is the proposed conditions and we're dealing with a lot that was created before the enactment date of October twenty-fourth of nineteen ninety-four with regards to the watershed protection district. So what we're dealing with is the three hundred and twenty-five foot non-discharge zone and the hundred-foot non-disturbed zone. We're proposing to do is, as you can see on the existing dwelling, there's a deck off to the side here. And they're proposing to reconstruct that deck, turn a portion of it into patio and do a koi pond with some walkway and some plantings on the property. So the wetlands are located to the north of the site here and this dark line here, the gray one, thicker gray one, is the hundred-foot buffer zone, which would coincide with the hundred-foot non-disturbed zone. And as you can see, we have a portion of the work in these two areas that is located within that zone. We correspond with town staff, both with Gene Enright on this and then also with Amy Maxver of Conservation. We filed a notice of intent with Conservation and the guidance that we received was to go for this waiver request. And that's why we're here for you today. We've provided this plan and we've provided some other documents for you to review as well. And if you have any questions for it, it's what I'll, I have, but I'll be happy to answer anything.
Gene, can we get your input?
Yeah, sure. So each of the proposed work items individually may not have triggered a waiver request. However, I felt the combination of them required the request. The majority of work is located within the three hundred and twenty-five foot non-discharge zone and is allowed under the bylaw. However, as William indicated, a portion of the proposed work is located within a hundred feet of non-disturbed zone. The work includes construction of approximately thirty linear feet of field stone wall associated with the proposed koi pond, relocation of an existing fence, construction of a stone paver walkway and planting beds. The wall would be constructed to create the koi pond and also provide support for the proposed Kittlebitt deck. The wall for the koi pond will be approximately two to three feet above existing grade and the depth of excavation will be approximately six feet in order to get the necessary depth for frost protection. The equipment used for construction would be a mini excavator and a bobcat. So.
Okay, any concerns on your end or that Amy expressed?
No, I, I think given that an NOI has been filed, erosion control will be conditioned if you were to approve a waiver request, site visits by myself would be conditioned. I provided an aerial view in the packet to give you kind of a sense of where this is located in relation to the lake. It's, it's a private driveway before you reach Marble Ridge Road on the right-hand side. So the lots were created through a subdivision in the early nineties. I think the, the waiver letter request stated it was created on October twenty-fourth, but it was actually October fourteenth, I think. So it was just ahead of the October twenty-fourth date was the date that we instituted a change to allow for a conservation zone and more restrictive use. So just prior to
Hey, Tom, if Gene is done, I just wanted to add a comment.
Please.
So, Gene, I appreciate you providing the aerial. I think it is important for the board to have a visual on where this is located. The drawings note the perennial stream which near this house goes into a small pond and that small pond drains underneath Great Pond and underneath Pleasant Street into the lake. It's a very short distance. Something on the order of five hundred, five hundred and fifty feet. But the, the thing that we should just be aware of, and I don't want to make too much of this, but because it is near the stream and this small pond that drain into the lake, that's an accelerated pathway into the drinking water supply. So no, I'm glad they're coming to the board. I think that's appropriate and it sounds like Gene and Conservation are taking a close look at it. And I think it's worth our time to, you know, support that close look because it's not just the distance to the lake, it's the proximity to the streams that drain into the lake, a very short distance away. And I'd like Bill, if he wants to comment on that, I'd be happy to hear any other comments he has.
Uh, no, I think you were referring to approximately five hundred, five hundred and fifty, like we said, getting to Lake Chickewick. We are showing erosion controls to help mitigate any erosion or silt that might make it down into those water bodies.
And Peter, I would just add that a portion of this lot is actually under a C R restriction. So they've stayed outside of the conservation restriction as well of any work. The initial proposal did include some patio work within that area and they've scaled that back.
Okay, excellent. That's, you know, really appreciate that attention to the area. And, and again, it's not just the raw five hundred feet to the lake. It's that this is much closer than that to a stream that drains into the lake.
Now, now, yeah, it just, I was having trouble looking at the topo, recognizing the lot, but now I remember what the deal was on this. If you notice the actual, it doesn't look like there's street frontage here, but the actual street frontage is the driveway and it was a deal we made to limit the number of houses being built because they originally wanted to build more houses here. And they built one less house than, than they originally did. So now I understand, you know, where it is. I guess, Peter, in the end, I would kind of defer to you about whether there's proper precautions in place here or not. I mean, it, it's, it's clearly pretty sensitive. It's close to the lake. And as you said, it's closer to streams that go into the lake. So the, the potential for a problem could be greater. But if you're okay with it, then I, I, I don't see anything here that, you know, that I would worry about.
Yeah, I appreciate it, John. And I, I think what I've heard from Gene and what I'm seeing is that the precautions are being taken. I just wanted to highlight for the board that extra care is required because it is very close to streams that in turn are very close to the lake.
Gene, does our waiver request come with any, or waiver allowance come with any conditions regarding conservation or erosion or is that all part of the NOI?
No, so I'll write up a waiver request with kind of findings of facts. I would appreciate if you would motion to approve a waiver request and then I'll condition two site visits by myself once prior to, to confirm erosion control is in place and once during construction.
Okay.
This was Aaron. One, one last thing. I just had a question. Yeah, I just had a question. I see the construction access on the plan that the applicant has submitted. I was just wondering what, what the true extent of the disturbance is. I see the, 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 the new retaining wall, koi pond and such, but beyond that, how much of the earth is anticipated to be disturbed? And then of that, what measures are going to be taken to to rectify that disturbance to ensure that there's, you know, when the construction is done, that there's no further runoff or disturbance to that area.
Yeah, so I can answer that. So to the north of the line that's indicated as the construction access, we're showing a proposed erosion control barrier. That's the line with the X's through it. That would be our limit of work. We wouldn't go any further than that. We had to stretch it out a little bit just so that we could accommodate some soil stockpiles, which are shown in that area as well. And then to answer your question about after construction's done, they're going to be loaming and seeding the area. And then once that area is all loamed and seeded and it's stabilized, they'll be able to remove the erosion control barrier. That's something that'll go on during the notice of intent and probably be discussed there a little bit more as well.
And are you aware and does the plan include the nitrogen phosphorus guidelines for proximity to the lake?
That is not included or part of our plan, but if I remember correctly, that is on the deed. It's something that rides on that, but we can certainly include that in our plan as well.
Gene, if that's possible, I think that might be helpful.
Yep. So I will condition either evidence be provided or deed restriction be established.
Okay, if we could get a motion to approve the request for a waiver with the conditions noted tonight.
So move.
This is Aaron Hall, second.
Okay, roll call vote, John?
Yeah.
Aaron?
Yes.
I'll vote yes, Peter?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Thank you. Have a good night.
All right. Royal Crest, we're not going to discuss tonight. They've submitted information. We'll review that and they'll be on our agenda for December first so that we can discuss their responses to to traffic study, to density measures and tabling formats, to butter comments and to revised buffers and height diagrams.
Hey, Tom.
Yes.
I know we're not going to discuss it and that's fine, but I wondered if, can I throw out a sort of a comment slash question here for, you know, just consideration by the board as we're mulling this over or is it literally no discussion?
This is, they're not up for a hearing yet, right, Gene? Well, you can throw something out there, but I don't want to discuss it today.
Sure. Well, you know, one of the things I had asked for in the last meeting was a set of measures to help us gauge what is the difference in density. And Gene has been working with them and so we have that table, which I think is helpful. And different measures, number of bedrooms, square footage and, and others. I, I don't have it in front of me on the screen right now, so I can't cite each one of those measures. And I apologize for that.
Looks like floor air ratio, bedrooms, numbers of people.
Yes, and it, it looks, it looks like if you're looking at square footage, it's nearly a fourfold increase in density on the same size property. Now that will depend on your interpretation of what is, you know, what is the appropriate measure of density. But you know, I, I, from my perspective, you know, this is, this is a a not insignificant change in, in what is being proposed to go on that amount of acreage. And if that interpretation is, is correct, that's very significant to me. And I just, you know, others may draw a different conclusion, but that's, that's very significant to me. And I, you know, I think that is, is something we really, at least I need to focus on going forward.
Okay, that'll be good to discuss on the first. Okay, great. Thanks, Pierre. One thirty-seven Andover Street, Stevens Coolidge State, request for insubstantial change to the approved permit site plan dated October twenty-nine, two thousand and nineteen. Plan was reviewed by the planning board through site plan review special permit approved on January seventh, two thousand and twenty. The request proposes to modify the approved buffer planting across the end of Wood Lane. In lieu of a vegetated buffer, the trustee are proposing the installation of a lockable barrier gate and corresponding signage.
Hey, Tom, this is Kelly. I have to recuse, recuse myself as an abutter.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. Gene, do you want to start us off or the applicant want to tell us why they're looking for an insubstantial change?
Whatever your preferences, I will just add that a butter comments were received late this afternoon, like right up till meeting time. So I have provided those in the packet and you may choose to read them into the record.
I plan to do so. Why, why don't we hear from you about any history and then we'll hear from the, from the applicant about why they're coming to us for this insubstantial change request. Then I'll read the abutter comment and then we'll discuss.
Right. So as you indicated, the approved plan, February seventh of two thousand and twenty, it proposed a dense planted buffer at the end of Wood Lane as that roadway dies into the Stevens Coolidge Place property. The purpose of the buffer was described at the time to cut off the use of Wood Lane by non-trustee staff to access the property. The vegetative buffer was one possible solution to limit or end the confusion of appropriate visitor or vendor access to the property. The trustees are here tonight to discuss why this planted buffer was determined to not be the right solution to the existing problem and to propose an alternative. Their, their alternative proposes a gate access. The fire department has reviewed that proposal and they have, they're okay with it contingent on a secured key access box be provided. And mainly the comment is, I've already commented about the, about the comments.
Okay, let's hear from the trustees.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Elizabeth Currie-Soul and I'm a project manager with the trustees. I've been before this group before, of course, with the permitting of this original permit set. To Gene's comments, our original set includes a proposal for ending the end of Wood Lane, a public road that dies into the Stevens Coolidge Place property with a vegetated buffer, the intention of which was to keep any possible visitors or vendors from entering, from entering or exiting the Stevens Coolidge Place at Wood Lane. After speaking with both staff and with our Wood Lane neighbors, we determined that the vegetative barrier was not the ideal solution to this existing problem. And there's a couple of reasons I've included in my narrative and I will go over now. The Stevens Coolidge Place staff has historically used Wood Lane for access by maintenance staff. And by having a vegetative buffer along the end of Wood Lane, of course, we would not be able to have our staff vehicles using that road, that public road. We have discussed with the Wood Lane neighbors the continued use of Wood Lane by trustees staff. And they understand and accept that that is, will be a continued use. We've also understood from, from some of the residents that there is a desire to continue to access the property at this location. And the trustees were supportive of their continued ability to do that. In my narrative, we do have infrastructure that runs along, runs along Wood Lane into the trustee's property. There's a water main that runs and ends at an existing fire hydrant with, within the property core. So of course, we can't, you know, have any permanent infrastructure such as a wall or any, anything like that, that, that's built over the water, water main. And we understand that a vegetative buffer is not a permanent structure, but it's also not an ideal condition to be creating that would condition to be creating that, um, would prohibit or would, you know, create an issue with access in the future. So, um, after speaking with staff and with our Wood Lane neighbors, we've determined that an acceptable, um, change to that vegetative barrier is, uh, the introduction of a new barrier gate. And this would be a gate that would be locked and would be for the sole use of trustee's staff. Um, we would not be using it for visitor access. Um, whether there are visitors coming into the property or exiting the property, and it would be for the sole use of trustee's personnel. So I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission has on the change.
Uh, so the question I have before we read the butter comment is if Wood Lane was always used for staff to get in and you wanted that to continue, why was this made a vegetated buffer in the original plans?
It, it was a, um, I would say, you know, we were trying to have as much buffer as possible for our Wood Lane neighbors. And so it was probably an oversight on, you know, in working with our consultants, how we would resolve the end of that street.
I, I, I just, I, I feel like I remember having pretty significant discussions about that, whether it would be a gate or whether there would be like large barriers or whether it would be vegetative. I mean, I, I do remember we did talk about that a good amount, so. I, I mean, this, that's, right now we have to decide, I guess, is this insubstantial? And I guess the reasons for having it there and now not having it there weigh on whether it's substantial or not in my mind. Um, does anybody else have any comments before, well, why don't I read the, why don't I read the butter comment? Hold on one moment. Okay, so I have an email from Melissa and Mike Rivers. Says, hi, Gene, thank you very much for sending this along. I appreciate it. The Comcast account is the right account to use for me. Our public comments are as follows. We live at 179 Andover Street. We have had several discussions with the representatives for the SCP about the proposal to remove the barrier. We were told that the sole purpose of this change was to permit the trustee's staff to access the corner portion of their property off Wood Lane for maintenance purposes. They subsequently told us that the emergency access was also required, which I have questioned since the plan was approved with the permanent barrier. We were not aware of the other reasons enumerated in this proposal. While our first choice would be to keep the vegetation and permanent barrier, we have agreed not to oppose this change based on the following representations that have been made to us. One, the gate to be installed will be wood, not metal, inconsistent with the aesthetics of the property in the neighborhood. Two, the gate will be locked with access only by trustee's staff and emergency personnel and be used solely for maintenance purposes and not to be for use by vendors or visitors or vendors. We continue to feel strongly the Wood Lane should not be used for any vehicular access to the SCP property other than, for example, their tractors or similar for maintenance. There will still be two other entrances to the property to mit, to permit them to achieve this. Three, in lieu of the original vegetation barrier, we discussed alternative locations for canopy trees and vegetable, vegetative screening to buffer the direct view of the new parking lot and the new structure. We would, we were told they would incorporate this into the plantings to be completed over the next couple of months. The Wood Lane side of the property will not be used, uh, for the Wood Lane side of the property will not be used to park staff or vendor vehicles or other back of house activities for events or similar. We would appreciate then any approval of the site plan modification will ensure these promises are followed. Please let me know if you have any questions. Thank you again for your help. Again, Melissa and Mike Rivers.
Second comment uh, is from, says, dear planning board members, my husband and I live at 169 Andover Street and about the SCP business on three sides. We continue to be negatively impacted by them. One, please do not allow SCP to change the previously created upon vegetative buffer at the end of Wood Lane into a gate. A, the intent of the vegetative buffer was to reduce the nuisance noise, people and vehicle caused by running a very active business in an R3 zone, thousands of customers per day, shield delights, cars and activities associated with a very active business in R3 zone in a manner keeping with the residential butters. B, the intent of closing of vehicular access was to eliminate, reduce the no nuisance and safety issues from trustee's staff, trustee's vendors, trustees, customers, et cetera. These are the real issues that have continued during construction despite the use of Wood Lane being off limits for the construction. C, SCP has at least two other access points to the property. How many and what type of vehicles do they find on having that they need three access points? D, by allowing the parking turnaround and stub entry, will continue to encourage parking for SCP customers and employees, increasing business traffic and safety issues on Wood Lane. Two, please consider the additional change in the nuisance will and the nuisance will increase in total. Event issues continue. We continue to have issues with noise caused by customer events at SCP. On September 3rd, when I requested that the noise be reduced, SCP refused to turn down the music. I do understand this is a separate issue from what is before the planning board, just part of the larger nuisance caused by the business and their attitude to resolving issues with the butters, or at least us. On August 30th, Old Village Lena Butters and I made the same request. While I was told the music was turned down, it made no impact. Both instances left my backyard and porch unusable. This is a real issue with a concert venue in an R3 zone. While COVID and construction has certainly reduced the size and number of events, the issues are the same and continue. C, SCP has now installed a destination promenade on their property, abutting the other side of my property. Based on the voices and noise from just the workers excluding construction noise, this is also going to be an ongoing concern. We did meet with an SCP rep on October 7th to discover, to discuss buffer plantings, but given SCP budget restriction and how the SCP rep was not even aware that they, there were any noise concerns from us despite in-person meetings, phone calls, emails, select board meetings, conservation meetings, and planning board meetings. We don't have much faith. Another consistent indicator of how SCP views their neighbors. If you did need to consider this change, please do so in the totality of the impact nuisance, safety and property value to butters and not as an insubstantial change. Also attached is the SCP letters sent to the planning board asking for the insubstantial chain marked up with our comments. Please review those comments as well and those are in our packet. Okay, um, so the question before us is, is this an insubstantial change? Um, and if so, um, then we can, um, uh, allow the change to go through with the sign off on the planner. If we don't find it an insubstantial change, um, then they would need to make a site plan modification uh, request and go through the hearing process. So just want to take people's thoughts on that, yeah?
There's one other document in the about a column, about a comment file that was again added really late because I missed it right before the meeting, but I did add it.
Which is a
to the agenda link, which is a handwritten mock-up to the trustee's memo requesting the insubstantial change.
I, I see that and hopefully everyone's had time to review that. I don't really know how to read that into the record, uh, but I, but I, I know I've taken a look at it, so hopefully everyone's taken a look at it. Um, discussing, um, I believe, and again, this is from Ms. Cormier, right? Um, her and her husband, their, um, disagreements with, um, the Stevens Coolidge base and trustees about what was agreed to, um, regarding, um, regarding this.
So, so I wasn't able to send up to the applicant, so my interjection, it was a little too full to make sure the applicants are aware of those comments as well.
Okay. Well, let's, let's, let's have a discussion about whether this is insubstantial or not. So we're, the proposal is to take a, um, uh, what was designed as a vegetative gate either a, and or for, uh, ending the road and preventing passing as well as buffering and changing that into a gate. What we've heard is that some of the neighbor, there, I think there are like four budding neighbors. At least one does not approve of this. One seems to approve of it with conditions, though they preferred the, the, um, vegetation as is and two have not seem to, either have not commented or seem to approve, so.
I, I, I guess my thinking was initially when the applicant was talking about and said, oh, the butters are for this, the people Wood Lane are for this. I said, yeah, well, that's fine if they are, they know better than we do because they're there every day. But it turns out that only the butters who have spoken are not in favor of this. And, you know, the first one was basically lukewarm at best. The second one was opposed to it. Uh, I gotta say, there's still a credibility issue here. So in my mind, there's no way I would
I, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but when my credibility is called into question, I just have to say that I have never said that this was a, um, proposal that was heartily supported by all of our neighbors. I was always clear that in my communications with them, we have built a majority acceptance of this proposal. So I'm not, I'm not sure where you got the opinion from them. And I'm trying to make this sound like it was a, um, you know, that everyone's excited about it because everyone has nuanced opinions about this and, um,
The point that's big is you don't have a single person who's endorsed what you're proposing, but you told us there was support. So my thinking is let's open it up to the public and have a public hearing. There's no way I would approve this as an insubstantial change, given what's going on.
Uh, okay, let's go down the line, Aaron.
Yeah, I, um, dug back through all our documents and I went, uh, on September 17th, uh, last year, um, 2019. Um, saw the, the initial submission, um, wh- when the public hearing was open for the project. And the, the, uh, plans, they, they call for, um, access at that area. The, the, the vegetated buffer is, is something that was added later on revised plans. And I, I do remember a, a, a hearty discussion on, um, you know, based on concerns from a butters of, of, um, access and perhaps people maybe just parking their cars on Wood Lane and walking to the site. Um, uh, a, a, and also, you know, the, the, the noise issues from events that have happened. And, and remember pretty distinctly that that was something that, um, the trustees, uh, that's a change that the trustee said that they would make. So to come back now, um, I don't, I don't completely understand that. Um, as John said, I would have a hard time, um, considering this, it's insubstantial change because I think it's something that came up in the public hearing process for the, the original proposal. And a, a concession was made based on concerns. And now this seems to be backtracking on that.
Okay. From, uh, I'll go next. From my perspective, I do want to say a couple of things that I think are positives. One, I think there has been significant outreach by the trustees and discussion with the neighbors as these things have developed. And it's pretty clear to me that even if there are disagreements, that they have, um, really gone pretty good distance to reach out, try to resolve things before coming back to us. So I, I appreciate that. Um, I don't know whether, oh, the other thing is our duty is not only to the butters. I think that's a, always a important concern. But I think we have to look at the public in general, the space, the layout, the site plan review, what our rules are and think about all of those things. The access, I think that's important in, in, um, making determinations. Um, those two things being said, I, I don't find this to be insubstantial. I, I, I think that the gate versus access versus vegetation was much debated, much discussed as Aaron, thank you for doing some of that homework. Um, it was changed and where that's the case, I really, I just don't see it as insubstantial. I do think it is something that's important to both the applicant and to the neighbors and to the board and not minor enough that I would characterize it as insubstantial enough to waive the, uh, general requirements. Peter?
Yeah, thanks. Uh, I, I also appreciate Aaron's, uh, homework here and, um, agree that it, uh, it does seem to rise above what we would consider to be insubstantial, given the degree of review that we had previously undertaken. And, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to call anybody's credibility into question. And I, I don't want my comments to be taken that way. But, um, it does seem to be, uh, remaining concerned and so, uh, and differing people's here, so. You know, the point in the letter that a majority consensus has been reached, I, I guess it depends on, you know, how we view a majority, but uh, basically I would say that I agree with Aaron's, uh, homework on this and that it's, uh, it's more than an insubstantial.
Kate, any additional thoughts?
Nothing new to add. I'd echo everything that you all said. I don't think it's an insubstantial change.
And, and to be clear, that's the only thing that's before us right now. This very well may be an appropriate modification. I just, I think the board feels that we need to go through the process. Um, and it may be of the four or five, you know, a butter is it two approve? And one is approves but with conditions and one is against. I just think that, that given the level of scrutiny we gave it before, that we need to do that same now. And it may be something we approve and maybe something we don't approve. It may be something we approve with conditions, but I think we need to go to the higher level. Um, at least, at least based on what I'm hearing now. I mean, if there, if a consensus is developed, then maybe we can try again, um, but I'll leave that to the applicant. So, um, is there, so is there, is this just a, is there a formal request that's been made?
Yes.
Okay, so let, so we should vote on that. So, uh, all right, so our, uh, vote is going to be to, the vote is going to be to approve just because that's what we always, really we vote on to approve the request for an insubstantial change. Um, John, how do you vote on their approving this as an insubstantial change?
No.
Uh, Aaron?
No.
I also vote no. Uh, Peter?
No.
And Kate?
No.
Okay, so not insubstantial and we'll leave it to the applicant whether they want to go through the, um, uh, modification process.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, um, anything from anyone before we get to the minutes?
So I, I would just add that I'm going to carry all the material in the Trinity file as well as Three Great Pond Road to the next hearing for Trinity and the December 15th hearing for Three Great Pond, Great Pond Road. So some of it may seem redundant, but I think it's only fair to have it all provided again.
Okay, great. Uh, can we get a motion to approve the minutes from October 20th and November 5th?
So moved.
This is Aaron L. Second.
Uh, John, vote?
Yeah.
Aaron?
Yes.
I vote yes. Peter?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Okay. You know, I look forward to seeing you get people in person. Uh, this is, uh, doing the best we can, but this is, this is tough. Um, okay, uh, can we get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thanks, Kate. Uh, all right, Kate, move to adjourn.
Second. Aaron L. Second.
Uh, John beat you. All right, uh, John, uh, roll call vote, John.
Yeah.
Aaron?
Yes.
I vote yes. Peter?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Okay, good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night, thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thanks.